I'll call the January 22, 2008 meeting of the Newport Beach City Council to order. Do we have a closed session report?
Nothing to report.
Okay, roll call please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Okay, would you please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance led by Council Member Webb and remain standing for the end of vocation led by Jim DeBoom from the Newport, Mesa, Irvine Interfaith Council.
Please join me in the pledge to our great nation, pledge of allegiance to the flag of our great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
If we can bow our heads in a moment of prayer. We give pause this day, the first meeting of the new year for the city council, as they get ready to do the city's business and to meet the challenges that are going to be presented in 2008. We're thankful for the council, for the commission members, for the dedicated staff and for the citizens of Newport who have come together, united by the fact that they want what's best for Newport Beach. We come from various backgrounds, professions, religious beliefs and life experiences. We realize that to meet the challenges, we need to treat each other with dignity and respect, we need to be thoughtful, and we need to be deliverative. We ask that you help us and lead us and guide us. Amen.
Okay, the first item on our agenda this evening is a presentation by the Orange County Human Relations Commission of a certificate of recognition in their annual report.
Good evening. I'm Pat Crone, Commissioner of the Orange County Human Relations Commission and longtime resident of Newport Beach. I'm here this evening to bring you copies of our most recent annual report, which I've given to Levon, to distribute later, and to tell you what we're doing in Newport Beach and throughout the county briefly this evening. I'd like to tell you that most of our programs are countywide. This includes our training that we have in the Sheriff's Academy, our Human Relations Awards, the programs that we have in our public schools for ethnicity and anti-violence and many others, educational programs that are available to the public. In Newport Beach, in the last fiscal year, I will tell you that in collaboration with the Newport Beach Police Department on Hate Crimes and Incidents, we documented four hate crime, crimes or incidents in Newport Beach. We mediated 62 cases where one or more of the parties is a resident of Newport Beach. We built communities through Newport Beach residents and staff through our Hate Crime Network, the Victims Assistance Partnership and Diversity Training. And it's that diversity training in schools about that I'm most proud of. We were working in, we are working in Cronin Del Mar and Newport High Schools. The program that we're doing in Cronin Del Mar I'm most interested in because I live quite close to the high school. The students have established their own Human Relations Commission and they're just doing great things in the community. I'm just so very proud of them and of you for supporting this effort. A student from Newport Harbor participated in our year-long Human Relations Associates intern program. And the students and teachers at Cronin Del Mar and Newport Harbor attended our Walk in My Shoes Symposium last year. In conclusion, I'd like to say that we do appreciate your investments in what we're doing. I personally appreciate it because I'm many, many years as a commissioner. But just like you build storm drains before the storm comes, and I know that, we build human relations infrastructure through our programs, institutions and relationships. If the mayor would step down, I have a certificate of appreciation I'd like to present to the city on behalf of the Human Relations Commission. Do you mind if I read it? It's very short. Certificate of recognition for the city of Newport Beach and appreciation of your efforts to create a safe and inclusive community in cooperation with the Orange County Human Relations. Years '06 and '07.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is something that this council always likes to see, and that's a check presentation from the Friends of the Newport Beach Library.
We'll go this way and then that way. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Susan Warren and I'm the Library Services Manager. I'm here to accept a gift tonight on behalf of the residents of Newport Beach and the Board of Library Trustees. You can see two gifts, $20,100 from the Friends of the Library, and it includes $16,500 for summer reading program, a second gift of $3,600 to bring the children of Newport Beach to the library for visits during the school year. And I'd like to introduce Marty Flink, President of the Friends of the Library, and say thank you.
Mayor Selig, City Council. Yeah, the part of this check is to haul the kids in and the other is part to keep their minds active. Just because they're on vacation doesn't mean their minds have to be on vacation, so. And I want the community to feel free to come to our sale. We have a quarterly sale coming up the first of February and also patronize our little bookstore. Thank you very much.
It's the best deal, best deal in town for books, right?
Yeah. Two for a buck, a lot of them.
Okay, our next presentation is another check, and this is to the 1-1 Adoption Fund from the Newport Harbor Republican Women.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting and I'm, I'm President of the Newport Harbor Republican Women. And this past April, excuse me, this past August, we started a program. And what we do is we collect money from the women in the club and we give it to the city and buy credit cards from Walmart and we give those cards to women that have had new babies and so they can buy what they need. And we're very happy and proud that since August, we've collected $5,415. We have a goal of $10,000. We're halfway there and this is part of our organization. This is Bettina, Liz, you all know Laura, and this is Becky. And there's a lot, and also Mary Newton is unfortunately not able to be here tonight and she's done a lot of the work on the program. And so we just want to thank you for having this and we love the Marines and we love all of you and it's been wonderful to, to deal, to work with Dick, Hurth and Lois and everyone's been very accommodating and so thank you so much. And this is our check.
Thank you.
And we want to, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Dick Hurth, who is a city employee, is the Chair of the 1-1 Committee, so I think it's appropriate he be here tonight.
Oh, Dick's. I thought I had all the women to myself.
Our program is called Our Hearts Are With You and in February, we're going to be doing a video, an All in Red with Hearts, and we're going to be sending it off to the Marines. And Mary Ann McDaniel is in charge of that. She's unable to be here tonight also. Thank you for everything that you do for the city. Thanks.
Okay, our next presentation is from Richard Lures and this is a presentation of petitions for the upper Newport Bay dredging. Richard?
Mayor Selig, members of the council. My name is Richard Lures, President of the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. Very special opportunity to be here tonight to present some petitions for you. But just a minute of your time on a little bit of background. This is part of the Chamber's General Plan Accountability Coalition. It was established by the Chamber in January of '07 and since that year ago launch, we have signed up thousands of people as part of the coalition. As a matter of fact, over 3,600 to date. The General Plan Accountability Coalition has produced five newsletters that were mailed to all registered voter households on topics such as John Wayne Airport, traffic, water quality, senior, or senior citizen center, and of course, the latest one on harbor dredging. We're very pleased with the city's initiative and efforts in establishing a coalition with our neighboring cities, the county and the federal government to provide funding to dredge the Back Bay. It's unfortunate that out of all the parties at the table, it's our federal government who has failed to uphold their funding portion to finish this important dredging project. The Chamber began a project just over a month ago during the busy holiday season to collect signatures to give to the city to use to show our support, our overwhelming support for the efforts in seeing this project completion. Our Friends of the Bay can give us a long list of positive outcomes as a result of this project. I won't go into detail now. The Chamber is also very much aware of the need for dredging in the harbor. In fact, as you go back in the records, you'll find the Chamber working tirelessly from about 1920 until its completion in 1936, when the harbor first became a federal navigation channel. I think Don Webb was on the barge, weren't you, Don?
That's right.
Along with the Chamber exec, my counterpart.
That's a message from FDR.
But our focus right now is not necessarily on the harbor, although that's an important project. Right now, it's to complete the Back Bay dredging project. We have collected just under 5,000 signatures on a resolution for your use. We want to thank and acknowledge Mayor Pro Tem Leslie Daigle for her leadership along with the efforts of Assistant City Manager, along with Homer Bloudow, Dave Kiff, the entire council. We want to acknowledge and thank our Congressional Representative, John Campbell. Chris Palmer is here representing John today for his efforts now and in the future, along with all the people who signed this petition. Took time out to find out what we're doing sitting at those tables and, and sign the petition. We stand ready to take additional steps if necessary to see this important project completed and we want to thank you for your initiative and your leadership in this important matter. I think Chris may have just a word or two to add. Do you have?
We have a quick update.
Perfect.
Sure.
And then I'll pass this over to maybe Pro Tem.
I don't have a check or anything for you guys, but.
Not yet.
Not yet, not yet. First of all, I just want to update the council and the city on what the Congressman is doing. These issues are very important to the Congressman. First, on the upper Newport Bay Back Bay dredging, John is working with the Army Corps of Engineers as well as the Secretary of the Interior in trying to obtain current funds that are in the Army Corps budget to continue the dredging, which as you know, is set to expire in July. Now, the Congressman and the Army Corps both are in agreement that demobilizing all the equipment and then firing back up is going to incur significant costs. So we are going to be working very closely with those two agencies to make sure we can at least get some money to get this project continuing and going until at least December, when the next 2009 budget will be, will be going on. Also, we have been successful in this tactic in the past, last year with the help of Congressman Ed Royce, we were able to get $5 million for Back Bay dredging. And also, in this current budget, there was $2.2 million in Back Bay dredging. Obviously, we need more and we are working on that. And then on the harbor dredging, Leslie Daigle, as well as Dave Kiff and the city have been meeting with Congressman John Campbell about possibly taking over the maintenance of the lower Newport Bay in exchange for the federal government funding it for the first time. So John is looking at, well, he will be introducing legislation that deauthorizes the project from the Army Corps and that would then give that responsibility to the city. So I think if we all work together, we're all on the same page on these issues and we can all make this happen. So our office is always available if you guys need updates or have any questions on the status of that. We're here in the district office here in Newport Beach and be happy to answer any questions. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Richard, and thanks to the Chamber for the efforts you've put into this.
Well, I just wanted to mention one other thing. I have a few extra copies of the newsletter. If anybody didn't get one, like to see what the update on the dredging project is, they're right here.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Chamber for this effort. I saw the petitions at the market, I signed them. And I'd also, while Chris is here, like to congratulate and thank Congressman Campbell, who's really worked hard in a bipartisan way with Senator Feinstein on behalf of the city. We, I met with John in Washington on this issue. He's been tireless on the city's behalf and we really appreciate it and thank you very much.
Okay, we have one final presentation. This is a proclamation for National Blood, Blood Donor Month. Is there a representative from the Red Cross here? Step forward to the podium, please.
We have a proclamation that all, that I will read to the National Red Cross. Whereas National Blood Donor Month has been declared since 1970 to help ensure an adequate blood supply and to stress the importance of giving the gift of life through the donation of blood. And whereas National Blood Donor Month is a month-long observance that shows us that donating blood is a simple, safe, life-saving and selfless gift that millions of Americans can do. And whereas National Blood Donor Month makes us aware that every day, blood is needed in hospitals and emergency treatment facilities for patients with cancer and other diseases, for organ transplant recipients, and to save the lives of accident victims. And whereas National Blood Donor Month addresses the need for constant replenishment of blood, especially during the winter months when blood is traditionally in short supply due to a reduction in donor turnout because of the holidays, busy travel schedules, inclement weather and illness, which can put the blood inventory at a critical low level. And whereas National Blood Donor Month helps us understand that approximately 37% of the U.S. population is eligible to donate blood, but only about 5% do, contributing to an annual total of about 16 million units to the American Red Cross that in turn are transfused to approximately 4 million patients. And whereas in Southern California, the American Red Cross provides 400,000 units of blood and blood products per year for the protection of patients. And there is a need for additional healthy, regular volunteer donors to join the ranks of those who already give themselves so generously. Now therefore, I, Edward Selig, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, hereby proclaim the month of January as National Blood Donor Month in the City of Newport Beach and urge all citizens to pay tribute to those among us who donate for others in need. I urge citizens in good health to donate regularly. I also urge all civic and service organizations and businesses, if they have not already done so, to form blood donor groups to provide blood for others. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Newport Beach to be affixed this 22nd day of January 2008. Edward Selig, Mayor.
Wow, thank you very much. You took everything I was going to say. Except last year in 2007, we collected 1,830 units of blood from the people here in Newport Beach. And every time you donate, you save up to three lives, so that comes out to 5,490 lives that were saved by the donations here in Newport Beach. So thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for all, everyone.
Madam Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action or report.
Counselor Hen?
One of the most fundamental commitments in the general plan that the voters passed here in Newport Beach a little over a year ago was to preserve and enhance the already high quality of life here in Newport for all of our residents. That's a broad commitment that can be manifested in many ways. One very important manifestation of that tonight is the group homes ordinance that we have on the agenda. We trust and are confident that that will be a very important step forward toward that commitment in the general plan. Another way that we can manifest that commitment is to make sure that the ordinances that we have on the agenda or on our books, ordinances and codes and regulations, are enforced vigorously. And we believe we have a new attitude and a new commitment amongst council and city staff in respect of enforcing the ordinances that we have. We've got a new stepped-up profile and we have now some facts to support that that I thought I would share with you for a moment. We just have gotten the most recent report for annual enforcement actions here in the city. And the first category is cases generated. This is overall items that were addressed by our enforcement staff and that's up 49%. The notices of violations that we've been issued in relation to those items is up 60%. And the number of citations, that is fines and penalties, actually issued associated with our enforcement is up almost 20%. And when you look at this, it's all across the board. It's not just having to do with group homes. Although we have filed lawsuits, including civil and criminal actions, and the enforcement of our moratorium on group homes, this is a broader effort than that. And it includes such things as business regulations, health and sanitation, nuisances, water quality, all sorts of things. And so this effort is a good, very good fact to demonstrate to our citizens that we are serious about this. When we pass ordinances, we mean to enforce them and we mean to enforce all of our ordinances for the betterment of all of the citizens of Newport Beach, such that the people that don't seem to be able to observe the rules are helped to do that along the way. And so I'm very happy to see this. I commend staff and our enforcement division staff and Dave Kiff's leadership, as well as Homer's in this respect, and I'm looking forward to this continuing. Thanks.
Counselor Rosansky?
Just a couple of quick things. Last Friday, I attended the Christmas Boat Parade Awards Dinner that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, the Commodores. It was a great event. It was very well attended. I think there were well over 400 people in the room and highlighted the, the great things that our residents do, both on the water and off the water, decorating their homes. So that was, was a lot of fun. I also attended, along with probably the majority of the council here, the League of Cities meeting about a week and a half ago, two weeks ago, where they talked about some of the issues that we are facing with sober living, group home facilities, not only in our city, but in other cities. And last but not least, I think also with several of my council members, if you don't already know, this is Restaurant Week. And I encourage you all to get out there and, and participate. There's over 75 restaurants in town that are participating in Restaurant Week. The council and the City of Newport Beach sponsors it. I know I've already been to a couple of places. I think Keith has me beat though. He sounded like he went to three or four, okay? And I saw Mike at one of the places as well. So we're doing our part. You folks need to do your part and get out there and support our restaurants in town and they're great deals. I mean, you can't even eat at these places for, for twice what they're charging. So I encourage you to do that. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Daigle?
Yes, I appreciate very much the show of support from General Plan Accountability and those almost 5,000 petitions. We prefer checks, but if you don't have that, we'll take the petitions. Appreciate it. And I wanted to kind of preface our update on the harbor in terms of the message of General Plan Accountability to the community. And that is, here in Newport Beach, we have the best of two worlds. We have a upper bay with a natural estuary and we have a lower bay with a recreation harbor. And that these two areas exist side by side harmoniously. So there's really something for everyone in our community. And the issue, the council knows, resonates with citizens because many of our citizens are environmentally minded. We live here because of the marine environment, the great geography that it carves out, bluffs and, and cliffs, it moderates the temperature, and, and that's a major reason why all of us live here. And so when we look at that issue, as well as our city's interests, our citizens' interest in getting value on our tax dollar, I'm happy to report that our localities have been spending their money wisely on the Back Bay and we have been able to fulfill the local share to that project. And we really appreciate this evening Congressman Campbell's office here. We're very honored by that presence and thank you and for your commitment to this project. was constructed in nineteen thirty-six. And so, the council thought about this problem and how can we, what are some possible solutions? And so, the first solution would be deauthorization, and that's a formal process where the city would take jurisdiction over the harbor, and that would involve legislation through our federal representatives. And then at that time, it may be appropriate for the city, the second part would be some type of a cost share. And our council historian, Don Webb, let me know in nineteen thirty-six, when the harbor was constructed, there was a cost share, a local cost share element to it. So, that's what our council, your council, is doing here to try to get the harbor dredged, and we're very committed to try to make that happen this year. So, thank you.
Counselwoman Gardner?
The last council meeting, I asked about street sweeping, which is very important to water quality, and I have been assured by staff that all of our public streets are swept on a regular basis.
Counselman Curry?
Well, I would just echo my colleague Counselman Rosansky's comments about Restaurant Week. If you're sitting at home watching this, it's still not too late to get up and go out, take your spouse to eat, to have dinner. You'll have a better time than we're going to have tonight, probably. And I would put in a particular good word for the desserts at Wilma's and for the ahi at Twenty-One Ocean, at Twenty-One Ocean Farm.
Counselman Webb?
I got two items. One of my walks, I went by the Environmental Nature Center, and you'd be surprised at how fast and close to completion that project is. They're hoping to open up in the middle of May. It's one of the most environmentally green buildings in town, will be the most one, I guess. I was able to see the reprocessed cotton installation instead of fiberglass, as well as another, a number of other things. I also, as one of my tasks as a council member, sit on the board of the Orange County Sanitation District, and one of the things that's happening is we're going to be having a groundbreaking, not groundbreaking, but a dedication ceremony for the groundwater replenishment program on Friday. And there's been a lot of press about this, and one of the things that is happening is the sanitation district is going to be able to take a substantial portion of the outflow that went into the ocean, go through the process of purifying it to where it is essentially the same thing as distilled water, pump it upstream into Anaheim, put it in the ground, and let it soak into the ground and replenish our groundwater. Now, a lot of people have said, well, gee, that means that the product from the sanitation district is going to be going immediately into our system. Well, if you look at the geology of things and how fast water goes through sand and the purification process at that point, from Anaheim down to where our wells are in Fountain Valley, it's supposed to take anywhere from ten to fifteen years for that water that's pumped in in Anaheim to get down to where our wells are. So, that's a pretty lengthy period of time for that water to be treated. In addition, one of the things that we're going to be discussing tomorrow night at the meeting is a rate increase, and it's proposed that we will be charging another dollar and a half a month for the treatment of the sewage that is produced and sent to the plant by our city. So, that's one of the things that we'll be discussing.
Thank you. Last Friday, I was able to do one of the more enjoyable things that one gets to do as mayor, and that is that I got to greet twenty-three Argentinian students here in the council chambers. This was really an impressive group of young men and women that are here for thirty days to learn about the United States and practice their English-speaking skills, which I have to say is better than my Spanish was. And they actually had to earn the money for this trip. They're here for thirty days. They spent a couple of years earning the money to come here and learn about our country, our system of government, and how it compares to theirs. They presented me a seal from their city, Santa Fe, Argentina, and also presented a DVD that gave me a little bit of a better idea of the history of Argentina, as well as the history of their town, Santa Fe. And I have to say that although I was supposed to be teaching them a little bit about our system of government, I think maybe I got a little bit more out of them than I gave to them. It was really an impressive group of young men and young women. Madam Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, Items One through Seventeen, and Supplemental Items Twenty-One and Twenty-Two are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, before we get into the consent calendar, I'm going to make a suggestion on a reorganization of the agenda here. In consideration of the folks that have been coming to the meetings on the group home issues, I'm going to suggest that we move that item up ahead of public comments, and after the public hearing on the Assessment District, my intent would be to go ahead and open the Assessment District hearing, take the public testimony, and then continue that item during the counting of the ballots, take the group home continued business item, and then come back and finish the public hearing on the Assessment District once the ballots are counted. And I would entertain a motion to do so.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, now for Consent Calendar items. Counselwoman Gardner?
I'd like to have number eleven pulled.
Counselmember Hen?
None.
Counselmember Rosansky?
Nothing to pull. I'd just like to register a no vote on item number five.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Dagel?
No items to pull, but I did want to note for the public that at the last hearing, a resident inquired as to how much we'll be street sweeping West Indiana Heights, and I would report that it would be the same standard as other parts of the community once per week, and we look forward to providing that service. And then I'll be recording an abstention on number five.
Counselmember Curry?
No items.
Counselmember Webb?
None.
Okay, does the staff have anything to pull?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item number fourteen, the Award of Concession at Corona del Mar State Page. We would like to have that item continued.
Okay. Anybody from the audience want to pull anything? Okay, seeing no one, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve items one to seventeen, S twenty-one, S twenty-two, except for pulling number eleven, continuing item number fourteen, recording an abstention for Dagel on five, and a no for Rosansky on five.
Okay, please vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, Counselmember Gardner on number eleven?
This is the Contract Amendment with CRT Transfer, Inc. for processing the city's solid waste materials. And this afternoon, I think most of us received, or probably all of us received, an email from the ware company asking some questions, and I forwarded this to Mark Harmon of General Services and have asked him to address these issues.
Thank you, Counselmember Gardner. Let me start off with maybe what this agenda item is not, because unfortunately, well, not unfortunately, but I was stopped coming in the door about half a dozen times, so maybe I can touch on that first. There are three distinct phases to the Residential Refuge Service Program, and the first of those is the collection of the waste, and that collection is the blue trucks that go out into the neighborhoods with the great sanitation team and collect the solid waste every day. This report, the recommendation from staff in the agenda report tonight, has absolutely no impact on that. I had people stop and question what we were contracting out and that. So, I want to be clear so I don't get a hundred phone calls in the morning. This has nothing to do with the collection part of it. The second part, the second phase of the collection system is transportation. Transportation, when we collect the hundred and twenty tons per day and bring it back to the yard, to the corporate yard, we load that material into transfer trucks. So, these are large eighteen-wheel semi-trucks. Those are city-owned trucks, and then we put city staff in these vehicles and drive the material up to Stanton to a processing facility. It's down the fifty-five, up the four oh five, and if we're lucky, we can get up there in about an hour, and back is about the same. And we do that six to seven times per day with these semi-trucks. The third and final phase of the process is the processing of the solid waste. We send that current contract with CRT, we send that to their facility. They take this tonnage, this material, sort out all the bad stuff, separate all the good stuff for recycling, and then take the residual waste to a landfill. So, that's the final step in the process. That contract with CRT expires in the end of February. You might have seen something today that said it expires tonight. It does not. That contract expires February thirtieth. I think there's a leap here, so I think it's twenty-ninth, but it expires at the end of the month, in February. When staff, a few months ago, we were starting the process of putting together an RFP, a specification, to get proposals for the processing part, the contract that expires. While we were doing that, discussion started with, and staff, at the staff level, we started to take a look at the transportation part of the contract. Now, again, the city owns these eighteen-wheel semi-trucks. Those trucks, to replace them, cost from a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy thousand. We operate those trucks with city staff, and of course, we use city fuel to put in those trucks to make those six, seven truck trips a day. So, staff wanted the opportunity, or recommends taking the opportunity, to look at including that part of the process, the transportation part of it, the part that is not visible to the residents, has, again, nothing to do with the collection, but the transportation part of it, and put that with the processing. So, when we send out a request for proposals, when we put together a specification, staff is recommending that we put that transportation function in with processing and take a look at any cost benefit to the city in doing that. Obviously, that would mean taking a look at the surplus equipment, working with the city attorney's office on any liability issues, indemnification issues, and those things, and that is why staff is saying, recommending that we step back for three months, keep the current contract going, and allow staff to go through the process of putting that into the specification. I think there's a potential there for significant cost savings. One of the benefits of having the processor, and these MRFs, this is what they do and do very well. They own, between them all, probably a thousand of these transfer trucks, and they move thousands of tons in and out of their facilities every day. The benefit to the city, currently, we're sending these full trucks up to the MRF for processing, and we take that hour or better trip back with an empty truck. Now, these processing firms, they can ship our material with their trucks out of the corporate yard, out of the city yard, up to their processing facility. Well, they'll load that truck with waste or with another residual materials from their facility, drop that off at the landfill on the way back to the city yard. There's significant efficiencies with that kind of a program, and it's those efficiencies we would look to possibly saving some money and get some proposals to do that work. So, that's what the report is about tonight. It's simply combining what is currently a city function into the specification to take a look at any cost benefit there. If that is where council would like staff to go, what we would do is come back then with the proposal, do maybe a short PowerPoint, and show the current costs with staff, staff equipment, and staff fuel, or city fuel, as compared to a proposal that we would get from a processing solid waste company. And then council could make the decision on the cost benefit at that time. So, that's the report. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Counselwoman Gardner?
Just looking at this, they talk about separating the work to be effective.
Yeah, one company did make the comment that they would like to see the work, and what Counselmember Gardner is referring to when she says the work, a company would like to see the trucking, the transportation function separated from the processing function, so that a company would come into the city yard, load the trucks, and then send it to whatever processing facility gets the contract. I would not recommend that for a couple of reasons. Number one, it isn't as simple as just throwing a bunch of trash into a Swift truck or a UPS truck, and this is very special equipment. They have special floors, walking floors, that move the trash out of the truck after it's been packed in there. These aren't trucks that you would just go out to several trucking companies and ask for bids. These are trucks specifically used in the solid waste community. So, we would be setting up possibly one solid waste company, shipping the waste to a competitive solid waste company, and I'm not sure there would be the coordination we would need. It is not an uncomplicated process. We load these trucks. The trucks have to make trips back and forth again six, seven times a day. There has to be a lot of coordination with the processing facility. They're dropping twenty tons of material at the facility each truck, and I'm not sure we would have that same coordination. And then the second reason is what I mentioned about the empty truck coming back.
Yeah.
There's efficiencies there with the same company doing the trucking and the processing. They can make use of that truck, so it isn't on the four oh five, four oh five fifty-five, putting an hour of what we call dead time with an empty truck. And I think if we're really looking for some cost savings, the biggest bang for the buck, we're going to want to keep the two functions together.
Well, I would say that also, I mean, to me, when you said that, that was suddenly like the aha moment for me, because we're talking about climate change, and we all know how much cars contribute to all the problems that we have in terms of our air quality and climate. So, if we can use that more efficiently and take one trip off the road each day, or six trips perhaps, when you think about the empty trucks, I think that would be not only a cost savings, but a benefit to the environment.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselman Hen?
Yeah, Mark, just to be perfectly clear about this, though, you do intend to conduct a competitive bid exercise here, although you might be combining the two functions in your RFP. It'll be a competitive bidding process to obtain the lowest cost for the city. Is that correct?
Absolutely, and that's been the plan. Prior to taking into consideration of the trucking function, it was going to be a competitive process, just with the process. We're very fortunate here in that we have four franchised companies that have, currently have permits at MRFs that can handle both the trucking and the processing, four large companies. So, I believe it will be a very competitive bid, and I think history shows, recent history shows, that the sanitation companies are very aggressive now, and I think that will play as a benefit to the city. So, I expect it to be very competitive.
Counselman Curry?
Thank you, Mark. I appreciated your explanation. They are aggressive. You're to be commended, I think, for looking for ways to lower costs and contract these services that don't have direct interface with the citizens. As you know, we have several fine companies that provide service in the city, and having a competitive environment, I think, is what really hones them and makes that service as good as it can be. So, as you put this process together, I hope and trust that you will maximize the value of competition amongst the firms that do business with the city and in the city, to keep all of them sharp. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public wish to address this? Step forward, please.
Hi, my name is Dolores Otting. I live in Newport Beach, and I know trash. Is there going to be a copy of the email that you're all referring to made, like, available to the public? And secondly, I think you get the best bang for your dollar when people want to compete for the trash, and therefore, it makes sense that you have the person that is going to be doing the transferring also be lined up with the material recovery facility that you're going to. And then I hope in the request for bid on these things, you also have a line item where the people that will be bidding, you'll also
Is there going to be a copy of the email that you're all referring to made, like, available to the public? And secondly, I think you get the best bang for your dollar when people want to compete for the trash, and therefore, it makes sense that you have the person that is going to be doing the transferring also be lined up with the material recovery facility that you're going to. And then I hope in the request for bid on these things, you also have a line item where the people that will be bidding, you'll also have their history and their insurance and any type of DMV problems, or any type of California Highway Patrol problems, and all of that will be part of the bid process, because, yes, thank you so much, Robin, for shaking your head. Yes, my darling, I just wanted to make sure that that was incorporated into any bid that we do with any type of transportation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Can I bring it back to council? Is there a motion?
Move the action.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion, Carrie.
Okay, on to public hearings. Our only public hearing this evening is item number 18. It's the proposed assessment district 92, the area generally bounded by Riverside Avenue, Cliff Drive, Tustin Avenue, and West Coast Highway for undergrounding utilities, and designation is an underground utilities district. There is a specified procedure for conducting one of these hearings. It's a hearing required pursuant to the Municipal Improvement Act of 1913, Article 13D of the Constitution of the State of California, in Chapter 15.32 of the City Code. Anyone that's here for this hearing, please listen carefully to what I'm going to read so that you understand the proceedings this evening. This is the time and the place fixed for the public hearing on protests or objections to the resolution of intention, the assessment engineer's report, proposed assessments, and all other matters relating to assessment district number 92, Balboa Boulevard Alley, and the designation of the area as an underground utilities district. All written protests and ballots regarding assessment district number 92, Balboa Boulevard Alley, must be received by the city clerk prior to the closing of the public hearing. That means as we're going to be hearing from the staff and our consultants in allowing public testimony, and by the time I close that public hearing, all of your ballots have to be submitted to the city clerk in order to be counted. So with that, I will ask the staff to go ahead and give their report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I have our consultant, our assessment engineer from Hall &amp; Forman today, to give a brief summary of the assessment methodology and the engineer's report. And before I turn the mic over to our assessment engineer, I would like to announce to the public that we do have replacement ballots, if anybody wants to submit a ballot prior to the close of the public hearing today, or close of this particular session.
Is that submit a ballot or change their vote?
To submit a ballot or to change a vote, or if they misplaced a ballot, just to submit a ballot.
Thank you.
Iris, could you introduce yourself so people know who you are?
I'm sorry, Iris Lee of Public Works Department.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Stutzl, consultant with Hall &amp; Forman, although mayor and honorable picket up, and council members. We're here for the public hearing. I'd like to kind of describe the works of the improvements. It's known as assessment district number 92, Balboa Boulevard Alley, bounded by West Coast Highway, Riverside Avenue, Cliff Drive, and Tustin Avenue. The district area is 13.27 acres. There are 54 parcels, 31 single-family resident, and 23 commercial. The lot area ranges from 3,900 square feet to 10,720 square feet. The undergrounding improvements proposed are electric, completion through the Edison, and phone with AT&amp;T. Cable TV is not part of this assessment district. The cost estimate submitted to the city was on October 2007. The estimated construction costs for telephone is $750,439, electrical is $933,441, and a street rehabilitation cost of $12,687, for a subtotal of $1,696,567. There's an incidental cost of $199,570, which includes assessment and administration fees, and a bond cost of $157,400, for a total cost to the assessment district of $2,053,537. The preliminary engine report dated November 27, 2007, was submitted to the city, where the council adopted the resolution of intent to initiate the process for the district formation. There were no amendments made to the preliminary engineer report, and the final engineer report dated January 22, 2008, has been submitted to the city for adoption based on the results of the ballots and council approval. The methodology used was based on the special benefits determined for the improvement of the district. A 50% factor for safer and improved reliability from an upgraded utility system, and 50% of the vote for aesthetic view enhancement. Each parcel was assigned a special benefit, one point for the 50% safer and improved reliability for the upgraded utility system, and one point for the 50% aesthetic view enhancement. A formula to determine the benefit was based on the parcel area multiplied by the benefit factors for safety and the aesthetic view, which gave us a total benefit point. The distribution of assessments was based on the proportional area and the benefit received. The assessments range from $8,673 to $149,230 per parcel. The average assessment for the 54 parcels is $38,28. There are no recommendations to modify the assessment or proceedings. And with that, I'm...
Any questions, council? Thank you. Any other staff report? That's it? Okay, I'll open it for public testimony on this assessment district public hearing. Does anyone wish to step forward and testify on this? Okay, seeing no one, I will remind you that if you want to submit a ballot, you have to do so right now. Going, going, gone. Okay, public hearing's closed. Okay, the ballots on this will be counted. We'll continue this item until after the next item on the agenda, the item number 20, and then come back and have the results of the balloting. So we'll now move on to item number 20. Item number 20, continued business. This is the group residential uses. This is adoption of ordinance number 2008-5, amending the Newport Beach Municipal Code relating to group residential uses and repealing the temporary moratorium on the establishment of new residential uses that are transitory in nature, second reading. Adoption of resolution number 2008... Do we have a number on that?
They're assigned afterwards.
Okay. The resolution sunsetting the Intense Residential Occupancy Committee, adoption of another resolution amending aspects of the City Council Ad-Hoc Committee on Group Residential Uses, and consideration of an implementation plan on group residential uses, and adoption of a new council policy on hearing officers. I want to remind everyone that the public hearing on group homes has been closed. This item is up, this is on the ordinance now, is up for adoption only. This is required to be available for public comment under the Brown Act, but it has been adopted by the city council on the public hearing, and that item has been closed. The proceedings for this evening will be that we'll honor the traditional five-minute time limit, and allow anyone who wishes to speak on this to come forward. The council, as I would remind you, would request that you direct your comments directly to the items that are on the agenda, the different resolutions, the proposed new council policy on the hearing officer, and also on the staff's draft implementation plan. So at this time, I'll ask if there's any additional staff report.
Mayor Selig and council members, we don't have any staff comments. We may have a few at the end. There are a couple of minor changes that we'd like you to consider before you move the final action. For the folks in the audience and at home, I would note that there is a staff report available with about seven or eight different attachments. The most recent attachment is attachment C, and it's out there for your review. That was later in the process, a summary of public comments from last time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kiff. Again, as we did last time, we will have the staff record all the questions that occur during the public testimony. And once public testimony is concluded, then the staff will go through and answer the questions that have been presented. So with that, I'll open the public hearing and invite those who wish to testify to step forward.
Joel Slutske, live on Lido Island. I have read the ordinance, and I throw out one last appeal for the 1,000 feet. I, after reading the ordinance, I got on the phone and I called the U.S. Department of Health, who informed me that there was no criteria, and that it's a state criteria. And I asked for phone numbers at the state level and received a number of them. I called each and every one of them. They felt that there was no criteria, and that I should talk to the person that they've given a contract for technical advice. Name is Patricia Patterson, 916-338-9460. I called Patricia, and she said, "This is a local issue." She asked why I was calling. I said, "I don't know. I might want to open a home." And so she said, "Well, you're going to have to comply with whatever the county or the city comes up with." And I said, "Isn't there a court case or something in California that I can hang my hat on? Because I've heard this over and over again, that 1,000 feet, we're going to get, for sure, we're going to get an injunction, et cetera, et cetera." She said, "To her knowledge, there is no court case from California," and that, she said, "However, why don't you call, we have a subcontract with a firm in Covina, and they handle the south of California." I called Margaret Edwards, 626-332-3145, and Margaret Edwards said, "If you're going to go into doing a home, and it's in Newport Beach, I think somewhere else, because I think they're going to enact some limit with respect to..." And certainly, it's an issue down there. I said, "Yes, I understood there was an issue down there, but I really just want to know, is there some standard here that is important?" And she said, she didn't know of a standard. I asked her if there was a court case in California. She said, "I know of no court case in California. I think it's going to be up to the city. And in Newport Beach, whatever they come up with, you're going to have to comply with. And if you don't like it, then you're going to have to go to court, and you'll be the first test case." She sent me to another person in Santa Ana, who has evidently put in some homes, and she said, "You might find somebody who's fought the battle before, but I didn't think that was worthwhile." I'm telling you that 1,000 feet, you might say, "Well, what is the rationale?" And Mr. Markman has said a few times, "What's the rationale for 1,000 feet?" I'm not sure I understand the rationale for 300-foot notice, if you're going to do something. I'm not sure I understand a lot of the things that we have in the ordinances. 1,000 feet seems right. A number of cities are going to 1,000 feet. I think you could hear about some just recently from other speakers. I plead with you that we put that in. Certainly, we were told by the operators that we're going to get sued no matter what. So at least let's put something in that makes sense, at least in the non-standard area, what you call the non-standard area, impacted area, whatever you want to call it. In the non-standard area, where we have the small streets and all the things we've talked about, no parking, and instantly, I will add one to your list, that part of the week, at least on Lido Isle, we're only allowed to park on one side of the street. So if you think it's impacted normally because of the small size, we have a really impacted situation. I suspect there are other areas in the city also that have that kind of situation. I think it's very, very important for us to put some sort of guideline, well, we do have a guideline in there, or a recommendation, but a more firm guideline that says that this is what we believe it should be. It may get tested in the courts. I suspect from what I've heard from everybody I've talked to at the federal level, at the state level, and the technical advisors, that there is no precedence in that you do what is logical. And as long as you're not precluding rehabilitation homes, I think you're going to be able to put that in and prevail.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and Willis Longyear, also living on troublesome Lido Isle. Over the years, we've depended on our city council to preserve the quality of life in our city, including protection from its institutionalization by the drug and alcohol rehab industry. The council failed to protect us against this institutionalization by the drug and alcohol rehab industry for the past four years, until only under mounting pressure by the citizens of Newport Beach, it finally crafted an ordinance which appears to be aimed primarily at pacifying those citizens. Although they seem like innocent residential facilities for persons housing young people working their way through personal problems, the more than 100 group homes clustered along the peninsula and elsewhere throughout Newport Beach actually are money-making business operations, where outrageous fees are charged for counseling and inflated rents are charged for crowded sleeping quarters and buildings jammed together door by door. In the face of the council's inaction on this issue over the past several years, concerned citizens have fought for enactment of an ordinance, including fixed standards, which would assure bringing this problem under control. Requiring the fixed standards, would it require licensing... Licensing of all group homes as business enterprises, requiring a minimum separation of 1,000 feet between group homes, at least in crowded coastal zones, and require timely abatement of those who do not meet these criteria. Instead, the council presents a list of objectives, which would be used by city council-appointed hearing officer to decide whether or not homes must be licensed, where they can be located, taking into account all kinds of factors, including minimizing economic impact on the business enterprises that are involved. In adopting this ordinance, the council is asking its citizens to trust it and its appointed hearing officer to achieve, in the future, what the council has failed to do over the past several years. Trust is something not obtained simply by the asking, but is earned by deeds and merit. In the absence of such deeds, strong regulations must be imposed to protect the innocent. The ordinance as being voted on tonight possesses no such strong regulations. Unfortunately, it appears that the citizens' battle with his own city council must continue until such regulations finally are put in place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Cindy Kohler, Newport Beach, West Newport Beach. I have a couple of questions regarding the ordinance. Dave, I received your email this morning that we do now have an online complaint form. So all of our residents, if you didn't know it, I was just told we can complain online about any home. Now, it's been a year and a half, and it's the day of the passing of the ordinances, but we now have that available to us. So I wanted all of you to know. Regarding the 1,000-foot, we were just informed that Los Angeles is in the process, and this is for you, Mr. Markman, of passing ordinances concerning group rehab homes, and they are going to put in 1,000-foot separation. If you could look into that for us, I would really appreciate it. This is to Dave Kiff. Dave Kiff, I got the last meeting minutes from the IROC committee meeting, and I read them, and the reply from ADP that is in the minutes is not what they said to me. And I have eight people that were sitting next to me who heard what I heard, and the minutes are different than what was said to me. So I wanted to know where you got those minutes from, because I saw the lady who was taking the notes, she got up in the middle of the meeting, and I never saw her come back.
I'll answer all the questions at the end.
I'll answer all the questions at the end.
Okay, I would like to know if there's a tape of that IROC meeting. The section that we're most concerned about, as Mr. Markman knows, because I've been emailing him back and forth, is Section 20.91A.050, Number 3, Certified Homes. What we don't understand is why the language is in our ordinances to support certified homes through the County of Orange. And I'd like somebody to tell me that, please. I've got information stating that these homes through the county bring in abuse, they bring in substance abuse, they bring in spousal abuse. Nancy Clark is a perfect example. I let this, I went to Mr. Markman, and I emailed him, and I let him know. Why aren't we using state language that's in the code for ADP? Why aren't we bringing something else in for unlicensed six-and-unders? I don't understand this, none of us do. So you're basically tonight saying yes to 800 beds. And if we pass these ordinances, we have no idea who's going to be in these beds. I've already been spit out, my house has been vandalized, I am harassed constantly. Isn't that enough for you people to see? I don't like living here anymore. You're here to protect us, not big business. You should use state law and language. That I would like answered. In regards to the ad hoc committee, our ad hoc committee is Councilman Rozansky, Councilman Gardner, and Councilman Hen. I would like to know why it is that that ad hoc committee is going to work with the hearing officer. To me, that's a conflict of interest. That just taints the process. I thought they were there through this process. Why are they going to now work with the hearing officer, who we don't even know who that's going to be? I would like that answered, please. Regarding the moratorium, it is stated that the moratorium is going to end tonight if you pass these ordinances. What I want to know is, I work in a building right across the water, and about a year and a half, two years ago, I can't recall right when, you passed a permanent moratorium against medical marijuana uses. There was one, one office in my building, I never even knew what it was. I saw old people going in and out with oxygen. I thought it was an attorney for trusts. There was no complaints in my building. How can you pass a permanent moratorium on one use with no complaints? But yet, you're going to stop our moratorium and put us, the residents, the burden on us to go through the CUP process, and have to wait while all of the impacts are happening to us? I'm saying, and for concerned citizens, we don't want the moratorium to stop. We want it to go through until all, all homes have gone through the CUP process. And finally, today, for the first time in nine months, I took a walk. I counted almost 100 people that I passed. Two hours. Out of 100 people, one person returned my hello. This is between my home and the pier. I saw no activity from residents. All I saw was deliveries by UPS to group homes that I know of. I saw deliveries in alleys of all kinds of support for these people, their food, their napkins or paper goods shoved into garages. Any, any activity I saw in my neighborhood was related to group homes. I have no community left. I think it's a really sad commentary, that I've been coming up here for almost a year and a half. I've worked full-time on this. I've quit my company job and worked full-time on this, to try to get you to address the issues that are impacting the residents today, and protect us, which is what you are called to do. I would like to move, but I can't. No one will buy my home. And I am not the only resident who is in this situation. I want to say that I hold all of you responsible for this. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good evening, my name is Dolores Otting, I live in Newport Beach. I testified at the last public hearing, and my name doesn't appear anywhere on the document, but I guess I didn't say anything or ask any questions. So anyway, what I did was I have my questions again for you, okay? And my questions are, first of all, what other city uses this type of a process? And if they don't use this, then what else do they use? My second question had to do with, how are we going to enforce the issue of secondhand smoke? We're not a smoke-free city, and how is that going to work? By the time that you call somebody, enforcement or a policeman to come down because they're smoking, and, you know, I mean, smoke is gone. The third question, that's very important, because I get this from a lot of people out in the community, is Narcanon. Everyone wants to know how Narcanon complies with the current ordinance we have, and how they're going to comply with the new ordinance, since they're a whole different breed of home. And then, question number four for right now, is we have a zoning, because it was said that the applicants will be, that we, the taxpayers, will be paying for the, you know, for the hearing officers, and because it would be discriminatory, you know, like according to the hired attorney we have for this. So I'm kind of wondering, we have a zoning administrator, and the applicants pay out of their own pocket for that process, so what's the difference in how that works? Or is the zoning administrator now discriminatory? And then, what I read at the last meeting, and I was at your Saturday goal policy-setting meeting, and John Webb and Steve Rozansky went to League of Cities, and it was brought up that, maybe, John, you didn't go to League of Cities, I don't know. Steve Rozansky was the one that was talking about it, okay? Yeah, yeah, you did. Thanks, thank you, I'm not losing my mind. Okay, anyway, and it was discussed at the League of Cities, was this, was the group home issue. And one of the things that you were told was the fact that, of course, finally, they told you that you had to work with the coalition of cities to get anything done. And it's been a year this March since we had 90 cities appear here, but of course, nothing has happened with those 90 cities. But now, you're going to do something with those 90 cities, so I want to applaud you for that, because it's about time. I've been up here before on this issue, before most of you were even on the council, on this issue, because I was up here in 2002 and 2003, and then that was passed in 2004. And since 2004, we have 800 more homes. I don't think that Mrs. Kohler is asking too much to say no on this right now. I think there's all kinds of things happening and going on. But anyway, what you were told at the League of City meeting was the fact that you aren't going to get any control. The state's not going to give up any local control to anybody on this issue. So if you now know that the state is not going to give you any local control, I have, I mean, the $5 million question tonight, that'll probably turn into $40 million at one point or another, is going to be why you're not adopting the state ordinances, I mean, the state laws, whatever they are. Why you're not using state definitions? Why we're making up our own definitions again? The only difference between this version of the ordinance and the new version of the ordinance is that it's the same car, basically, it takes you nowhere, okay? It doesn't take the residents anywhere, but yet the GPS system, instead of being Mr. Burnham's voice, is now Mr. Markman's voice. And that's about all that's different on this, because what you're doing is you're allowing the 800 extra beds that aren't licensed. And what it says here, for the state, okay, for the ADP governing regs, it says here, and I'm going to read it again, because it was read back, it wasn't read correctly, and you have it there, "Except for facilities operated by a state agency, no person, firm, partnership, association, corporation, county, or public agency, or other governmental shall establish, manage, conduct, or maintain a facility." So any, the only people that can do this, maintain, except the state, okay? They can maintain a facility which provides for 24-hour non-medical residential alcoholism or drug abuse recovery or treatment services to adults without first obtaining a current valid license from the department, and that's from the Department of ADP. So, and also, when it comes down to the Section B, and see, this is another thing that I don't understand. You advertised for a public hearing a few weeks ago. You had the first reading of the ordinances, I guess, and you, but yet, this wasn't included two weeks ago, which was Section B, which was the Ad Hoc Committee on Group Home Residential Uses. So I don't know how you can continue it and say, "The public hearing's over," but yet that wasn't ready two weeks ago, but you'll take testimony on the rest of the stuff. And why I'm bringing this to your attention is because what is happening here tonight will be looked at by many, 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 many cities throughout the state of California, throughout the United States. This process has been embarrassing. People did not get their questions answered at the last meeting. I wasn't even put on the document. It was kind of like a fumble at the end to try to figure out the questions. So maybe we need to have someone from the clerk's office record the questions and then read them back, because it didn't work last time. And as far, and I know my time is up, but as far as group, I mean, you know, like on Section B, where it says that the city, on the ad hoc committee, is to serve as the city council's liaison to staff regarding the implementation of the group residential ordinances, including but not limited to the convening of a slate of, of a slate of slates of hearing officers and staffs by mentally progress council. I say no, this is too vague. You can't vote on this tonight. You're not telling the public what you're doing. You're not telling the public what time these hearings are going to be. Are they going to be at 3:00 in the afternoon? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. But anyway, this isn't the good enough language. I know Mr. Markman doesn't like the brown act or the public, but this is not good enough language.
Thanks.
And she hates coming after me. Bob Rush, 20-year resident. This is a public comment section for the ordinance that's before us tonight, that I assume that you're going to be passing. And, so I'm going to keep my comments specifically to this ordinance and its application. At the last council meeting, Councilmember Curry came the closest I've heard in the last year and a half, and going back several administrations now, the closest I've heard anybody admit to what caused the over-concentration of drug rehabs in Newport Beach. Mr. Curry's comments were, 2004-16, ordinance 2004-16, really didn't protect the community, if I have that correct. Really didn't protect the community. Mr. Curry, with all due respect, that was an understatement. 2004-16 killed the community. 2004-16 caused over-concentration. What it did, what it did, was it removed any barriers that we had in place up to that point, for the rapid rampant proliferation of drug rehabs into the city. Now, you compared it to Santa Ana Heights. Santa Ana Heights has been under the county auspice for quite some time, and they don't have any adequate barriers for that use either. I've looked into that in their zoning and use matrix, and they don't really have adequate handling of that either. So that's what caused over-concentration. Now, specifically what caused it beyond the 2004-16, I believe that a very small group of complicit and negligent public officials, who acted in a self-interested manner, removed those barriers in 2004. They did so while they had a number of different conflicts, what appears to be a number of different conflicts, and in many of instances, we have public officials sticking their actual fingers into the rehab profit pie. That's what caused the removal of the barriers in 2004. Now, we introduced documents, the concerned citizens introduced documents showing these potential conflicts, these serious documents, very embarrassing documents, as far back as April last year. And since April, we've gotten no response on the significance of these documents. As a matter of fact, they've been wholly disregarded. They are sitting on the website in the April 10th meeting, Item 13, I believe, under, outside legal budget, 50 to 60 documents, and then another 20 or 30 documents the following council meeting, almost a full year. Since they were presented, showing serious conflict of interest problems, there's been actually no discussion in this chamber, there's been no addressing of any of these conflict issues in the public eye, and we've been up here time and time again, asking for honesty, asking for this to be addressed. And last week, Mr. Hen, our last council meeting, Mr. Hen asked for our trust, give him a chance in using this new ordinance to resolve this problem. Actions speak louder than words. We have not seen anything in the past year that would indicate your behavior as a body is going to change. We believe that as we get into the enforcement of these, and the application of these ordinances, we will be, we believe that we'll begin to see the same monkey shines, the same political shenanigans that we've had to deal with for the last four years, five years. Oh, we didn't accept money from a drug, that went through the property. No, that wasn't a drug rehab business, that was a carpet cleaning business that was operating out of the city attorney's office. We're going to have the same reactions once we run into these similar problems. I could see it now. So, you know, I'm really disheartened at the fact that this ordinance is going to pass, it appears. I do believe that we need to address conflict of interest, we need to tighten it up. We cannot have you folks as a body saying, "It's not my job to be concerned with the behavior of a co-council member." You can't do that. You're the guys, you're the guys that are the last line of defense for us. It's not going to fall to the FPPC if one of you guys is truly conflicted, and then eight months later, the FPPC says, "Yeah, he's conflicted." And meanwhile, we have all this stuff that happens in that eight-month span of time. It just can't be. It's not my job, it's not going to work. We're not happy with the ordinance, you've not done anything to give us any kind of assurance that ethics, that laws aimed at conflict of interest, ethical behavior of our public officials, none of that's been even addressed, none of that's been, none of that's been talked about as far as future changes. I've mentioned it to a few of you, didn't get a warm response on that. We don't believe that anything's going to change. Now, so we're here tonight.
Bob.
As a result, as a result, we have three things we can do with respect to our public officials. We can vote new public officials in, we can recall the public officials who we voted in, or we can sue those public officials who we feel have gone outside the line of propriety. And that's where we are tonight, and that's how we'll proceed from tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Hello, my name is Mary Hyatt. I've lived on 31st Street for 30 years, and vacationed on the peninsula for 20 years before that, with my family. And my family has several rentals, summer rentals, and I just wanted to say that I think it's really sad, the way the neighborhood has changed. And I admit that I'm naive, because I had heard from people that I know in other states that we had a, sort of a culture of drug, drug and alcohol abuse on the peninsula. And I said, "Really? I know that I'm naive, and I didn't see it particularly, but obviously, it's here, and I've noticed that the whole peninsula atmosphere has changed in the last four or five years." And I've never seen in 30 years the crime like it has been in the last four or five years, and I can't help but think that that's somehow related to the element that is living here and attracted by the people who are living here, brought by the people. But also, the fact that, I know the 10% that the beach house rentals in the summer makes probably isn't a big part of the city budget, but I've had quite a few families who've been renting for anywhere from 10 to 25 years in a row, the same four or five weeks every year they come, and they, they have small children, small grandchildren, and they're, they're thinking about going someplace else, because they don't want to expose their little children to the type of people we have roaming the streets now. And I, I'm sure you know all these things, but I just felt like I wanted to say it myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dick Nichols, Corona del Mar.
Keep your eye on the box, Dick.
This particular box?
That's the one, that's the one, thanks.
I would like to ask the council if they could try I would like to ask the council if they could try and, not try, trace the attendees of the residential ADP program classes, particularly the Sober Living by the Sea. We know that when they were having their classes last year, that they were trying, they had about 200 in their facility and wanted to get them okayed for downtown. They since have moved them. Those classes are part of residential ADP programs. The places where those people live have to be licensed. They are not licensed, because the 200 do not correspond to the number of licensees they have in the city. And so I'd like to see those traced. They are illegal now. They have been illegal all this time. We should immediately file on them and get this taken care of. That would eliminate a very large number and would very much lower the amount of problem we have. And lastly, I'd like to comment that this is very big business, and it's now very political. Mitt Romney's Bain Capital has purchased CRC Health Group, which has purchased Sober Living by the Sea. Sober Living by the Sea costs $30 million. CRC Health Group is the largest in the nation. It has 50,000 people a year attend their classes throughout the nation. It cost Bain Capital $742 million. This is enough money that maybe we could ask Mitt Romney to intercede for us and slow down the growth of this, because it's not exactly what I think the people who support him want for a presidential attitude. I thank you, and please move ahead.
Thanks, Dick.
Lori Morris, West Newport. I hope you'll beg my distractions here. I've had a lot going on. I think you understand that the media has now gotten a hold of this, Los Angeles Times, we have KFI, we have Channel 5 News. Everyone is watching this process. It's an emotional process. We have gotten up here several times, I mean, close to tears, begging for help. Now we seem to be at the end of this rope. I don't consider this second hearing to be a hearing. I think that when you have a hearing, and I ask a question, or the public asks a question, you should answer it when it's asked, because this is not a cohesive type of question and answer. Poor Dave here has to write as fast as he can. And the last time, when I asked my questions, they didn't get answered. There was a few of them that apparently it says in the ordinances that you were going to put a handbook out or something out that answered those questions. Well, that didn't get into this ordinance. All those questions didn't get into this second reading of the ordinances, and that's a problem. But with this being a public hearing, I would again like to have my questions answered. I asked at the last meeting, "Where did the language come from?" And I think Dolores asked that question again. We are again making up language, like we did in 2004, that created this mess. We got rid of the CUP process. We instituted an FEP process that absolutely no one came to get. No one made them comply. So what are we creating now? Another quagmire, that residents are going to have to come to all of these hearings? And when are these hearings? 3:00 in the afternoon, like you do with the building code hearings? Everybody works here. We can't be at a 3:00 PM meeting. I asked, "Who will be that hearing officer, and what's the criteria?" We still, apparently I'm hearing rumors that it's going to be a JAMS judge. I'm not sure what that will entail. But from what I'm reading from the ordinances, it's going to cost the taxpayers, the taxpayers, not the operators, close to a half of a million dollars to institute this process. Why are the taxpayers forced to bear that burden? The operators should. The City of Irvine makes you put up a fee of $15,000 just to start a CUP process. Why are we giving a multimillion-dollar business a pass? And we are accepting that burden. I just don't understand that. The other portion, you know, we, as has been stated before by several residents, why aren't we adopting ADP law into this ordinance? Why have we created this, you'll see on Chapter 9, or on page 9 and on page 66, this criteria for a certified home? I mean, we should be taking, just like we do in our codes, the electrical code, the building code, the fire code. Every one of those is state law. And that's to stop there from being some type of problem when something arises. We go right to state law. We are in line with state law. Yet we're not doing that on one of the most important things that face this city today, that all these residents are here wondering about. How are we going to fix it? Well, if we don't institute ADP state law and go by it and go by those rules, we are creating a way for the operators to sue the city, because they're going to come step right up and say, "Hey, you're not going by ADP law. We are, you're not." So that's just common sense to me that you would implement ADP. And that's on page 9, number 4, the sixth bullet that I'm going to get to now, is this certified housing. If every member of this council does not understand what certified housing is, you better find out, because you're going to have to answer for it later. Certified housing is run up in Costa Mesa right now by a woman named Nancy Clark. This is where people from Theo Lacy Jail or prison are sent to. And they either, they have other offenses, and if it was a felony, it's knocked down to a misdemeanor, which they tout on their website, they can do for you. Then you go into a Nancy Clark home, and you're a parolee, and you may have a drug offense, but that's not the real offense that you're there for. You go into these homes, and they have outpatient services, which is against ADP rules and regulations. Why are we allowing certified homes? And I know, Dave, you sent me an email today, and Mr. Markman did, and tried to explain that whole process. I'm still not buying it. I'm saying those certified homes should be struck from this language tonight. And if every council member does not understand what certified homes are, you should not vote on that. That should be struck. If you're going to vote this in, get rid of the certified homes. Just take it right out.
Lori, how many more questions you have there?
I think that's it. I just think that you all know at this point that this has been very emotional for all of us. And as a community, it has been so distressing, and we're so tired of this. It's time now to do something. And I don't think these ordinances go far enough. We need the 1,000 feet. We need to stop the over-concentration, and it's not addressed here. You're going to license the 800 unlicensed beds, whether you say that or not, you're licensing them, and that can't happen. If you do that, you're sinking us. We've spent a year and a half of our lives, like we've talked about, our lives have been spent doing this, and I'm sick of it. So, yeah, I am here pleading the case, and I hope that you will follow your conscience. And I'd like those questions answered. Thank you.
Shelley Dopkins, Newport Beach.
State your name, please.
Shelley Dopkins, Newport Beach. Big picture. Four years ago, council really screwed up. Opened the gates. Opened the gates to the extent that we now have four times the per capita of these group rehab homes of any other community. It's atrocious. It's shameful. Big picture. The City Council passes ordinances and codes to protect its people. You've heard instance after instance of what these group homes have done in the proliferation that they are. I'm not going to go back over the harassment and the smoke and the traffic and the increased burden on all our facilities. But I am going to ask you to do why you serve on the council, and that is pass codes and ordinances that protect us. It gives you a lot of leeway. One of the things that you should have the leeway to do is to make it 1,000 feet. Talked about big picture, little picture. I walked here tonight. It's about a mile to walk here. At every 1,000 feet, that would pass five group homes. Isn't that enough? Think about that. I think that we need to really be aggressive. This is new ground. This is an area that hasn't been done before. Let's take the lead instead of looking for precedent and that kind of thing. Big picture. It takes courage. It takes resolve. It will certainly require challenges, challenges to our resolve, challenges in the legal area. But you have an opportunity to serve our residents. You have an opportunity to right the wrongs that were done four years ago. You have an opportunity to make Newport Beach a visionary community. Do something now, because what has happened has decreted our family life, our community life, our neighborhood life, and our city life. And you've heard resident after resident that has told you that. Please be aggressive. Please don't hesitate. Please maintain your resolve. Let's put this to rest once and for all.
Anyone else wanting to speak?
This is not new news. I'm not new news. This complaint started, I initially became involved in 2003, driven to understand where the drug rehab facilities were because of a rash of crimes that we had on our block that we traced back to that. It is well-established, not only in Newport, but in other places, that there is a very close, including with the state, which has fused the ADP and made it subordinate and essentially one with the Department of Corrections. There is a close and symbiotic relationship between drugs and crime. It's unfortunate. It plagues our society, and right now, it plagues our community and puts it at incredible risk. I was out on the beach Sunday morning, and there was one of the staff reporters from the LA Times. And I followed her while she went over to this group of people that were having a so-called AA meeting out there, which they contended they had for years. They claimed they had nothing to do with any of the rehab facilities and the residential facilities that exist in this area. Yeah, and they said they had a lot of privacy, and they didn't know anybody's name, but the people from all over the world came to go to these meetings on Sunday mornings. So actually, there were several people, three or four people, that came up, and a fairly articulate gentleman named Grant introduced himself to the reporter and said that these meetings did not have any supervision. They were just people getting together to talk. And then immediately proceeded to say that those meetings had gone on for years, and that at least a third of the participants in the meeting were there by court order. They were required to get counseling. They had a card. They had to regularly report to the court to confirm that they had the counseling. He then went on to say how wonderful the city is, that it has enabled over 100 of these types of meetings on a regular basis throughout the city. And, you know, he mentioned Carl Mosin, Councilwoman Gardner, and her father having been very supportive over the years. And then he proceeded to talk, and I said, "Are you by any chance affiliated with the Reach Foundation?" And he indicated that yes, he was. And I said, "Oh, I guess you're Grant McNiff. Nice to meet you." He knows a lot about this. He knows about what he said to be 115 or more residential care facilities. He's been involved with the cause for quite some time, and he's involved with the business for quite some time. We cannot allow this city to continue in the direction that it's going. And the ordinances that are currently posed, while they offer a couple of good foundations, do not go far enough. We cannot rely on them to protect our health and safety. We cannot have any reasonable assurance that there will be consistent and equitable enforcement. We don't have standards. The philosophy of this ordinance is to be very vague and to take kind of the cowboy approach. A lot of discretion is going to get the job done with little exposure. In fact, it does not assure either the city or the public that the job will be done in a consistent way or in an equitable way. And the citizens are unwilling to take that risk on behalf of the community, and they're very disturbed that the city is unwilling to take that risk. The state could care less about us. They could care less about other cities. This problem doesn't just exist in Newport, although Newport happens to have the most severely documented over-concentration, particularly in the coastal area. I've had calls from Temecula since this has come out. It's like people that are suffering abuse, and they cannot, they're afraid to speak up. They don't know where to speak up. They've had similar experience to what Joe Slavsky and others have mentioned. They could bounce back and forth between their local governments, the state governments, and the feds. The state is most anxious to relieve the tremendous pressure it has in its capital expenditures. So rather than build a lot more correctional facilities, what better thing to do than to implement a panacea of releasing criminals that are so-called nonviolent criminals, such as people that have been convicted for theft and drug dealing, into the community with little or no supervision? That's not acceptable to us. Other communities are suffering from it. Other cities are going to respond. This issue is going to be addressed, and it's going to be heard by the courts. And we are most disappointed that the city is not sticking up for the citizens, because it's trying to avoid that. This city has plenty of money. This city doesn't know what to do with the money it has. People haven't learned in this city how to manage capital budgets, because the city has been so flush with capital. Well, we are saying, "If you are unwilling to stand up for us and protect us, if you are unwilling to drive a good land use policy that's consistent with the general plan and protect our health and safety, then we're going to seek our relief in the courts." And I'm very sorry to say that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Because of the way rumors swirl and get to be so large, I'd like to clarify something. I got a call today about this Grant McNiff issue, and somehow I'm supporting them. Grant McNiff was a friend of my father's. So I knew him because I lived in my family's home. And there was a period there where, I think when I was in college, that they saw a lot of each other, because they were drinking buddies. And at a certain point, Grant took the pledge. I know that, because my father told me. I cannot tell you what Mr. Grant McNiff's business is. I have not had any conversations about this. I haven't had any conversations with him for a number of years. I may have run into him once in the last, I don't know, decade. But I certainly have not spoken to him about the issue of sobriety, of support for the group, whatever it is. So I think we've gotten in trouble at times, because we haven't addressed issues quickly. There it is.
Okay. Next speaker.
My name is Anita Hermes. This is my first council meeting. And much to your surprise, I have no history, no sentences, but I have three questions. And I'll keep, they'll be kiss questions. I'll keep them short and sweet. I would like to know what process all of you followed when you've made these decisions about the group housing? And I'd like to know what your priorities are when you made these choices? And how do you think this issue looks to the world for the City of Newport Beach as to how you are honoring your promise to the citizens that we elected for you to represent us and put ordinances in place for us to maintain the quality of life that we have here versus other reasons? So I kept these questions short, so that they don't get misunderstood in the notes or left out. Please answer them.
Any other speakers? Okay, I'll close public comments, and I will ask the staff to respond to the questions. If you can try and get through each and every question that was answered. I know some of them were more difficult than others to put down, but you can give it your best shot.
Thank you, Mayor Selig and councilmembers. Let me apologize to start. I think we did struggle a bit with answering the questions last time. Ms. Otting makes a good point. It was 11:15 in the evening. So I beg your forgiveness on that. So I beg your forgiveness on that. And Dolores also asked a number of questions that I did promise to respond to and I realize I didn't do it in Chart C. So I will do that. We'll do that today. And, but I hope Dolores accepts my apology there. That was an oversight. I didn't intend to do that. I'm going to have Jim answer the first question that came up about the legal constraints or cases relating to distancing.
Okay. I have to start what I say by saying, the first thing I said four hearings ago. That this task that's in front of the city, given the present circumstances, whether or not we like the policy and the law, is to balance the protection afforded by housing laws, state and federal, to handicap people, which include these people in recovery homes, to balance that against the impact of over-concentration those facilities may have on residential areas. And I've also said that we push this pretty much as far as we can go, in our opinion, from a legal point of view. And I'm going to get to more of that after, I end up with this after Dave and I, I guess, through dealing with his subject matter. The criteria, I guess the question is, how do we get to our criteria? The thousand feet. Okay. Well, yes, I have asked and to this moment, have never heard in all my discussions with all these nice people who are incredibly involved and their lawyer, where came, from whence came the thousand feet? I know a thousand feet is a typical standard for dispersing adult uses, one from the other, in standard zoning ordinances. Other than that, I know of no rationale or application, even in that instance, you can't do it unless it allows a number of viable opportunities and locations for these adult uses to be operated. So nobody knows about a successfully litigated ordinance, a successfully litigated ordinance or state statute that has a, on its face, dispersment requirement of a thousand feet or 1,500 feet or any other feet. It's facially discriminatory because it decides that these handicapped people have to be moved away from each other without any specific consideration of the impact on the neighborhood. So we decided a long time ago to try to create an administrative process that would, instead of doing something without any logic behind it and facially discriminatory, we would do something administrative so that these issues, home by home, facility by facility and neighborhood by neighborhood, could go through a hearing process where the anecdotal and other evidence could be put in front of somebody so that it could be understood. What is this balance between these protected handicapped people who are recovering addicts and alcoholics and the impact they're having on the neighborhood? Not just generalities, not just talking about the atmosphere on the peninsula, all of which undoubtedly are true, but in a legal sense, balancing these two policies, case by case. There are tremendous advantages legally. I don't need to tell the people who are going to sue us from the operators what those advantages are. There is a tremendous difference between validating and protecting an as-applied attack on your ordinance. That is, your ordinance was applied to this facility. This facility was not given one of these use permits because of the secondary effects it has created and may continue to create in the circumstances, particularly if there's overcrowding. That person, in order to maintain in business and essentially get a court to overturn a city decision, has to essentially show that there was no basis for that decision, that there was no substantial basis. The decision was arbitrary. You were just trying to get rid of one of these uses. That is the advantageous legal position that we are trying to move the city and the citizens and the residents who have these problems into so that when we deal with their problems, it will stick. And that's a complete antithesis to a dispersment standard that just comes out of, I can't even explain. Nobody here has stood up before the council or could stand up and say, this is why we think a thousand feet. We have created at the behest of the concerned citizens, this came from them, the APA standard or one or two such uses per block, otherwise you get overcrowding. And we also have defined factually, in Newport Beach's case, what is an average block that's calculable? Six or 700 feet, kind of a dispersment standard for the hearing officer to apply and consider case by case. I will say, somebody asked, are there cases? Yes, there are numerous cases. Do they apply in California? Yes, because they've been, this test in those cases has been adopted by the Ninth Circuit. We are in the Ninth Circuit. A more advantageous test applies in the Eighth Circuit, Minneapolis, and places like that. We are not in the Eighth Circuit. And unless somebody wants to watch a lawsuit meander toward the U.S. Supreme Court and hope you're one out of the thousand cases that could get there, you're not going to get any relief trying to apply an Eighth Circuit standard in the Ninth Circuit. I've talked to Mr. Titus about this over and over and over again and he knows what I'm talking about. So the reason for our criteria is, I don't agree with Denise and she knows this, we have specific criteria. The use permit decision has to be made on the basis of substantial evidence. There have to be findings. If you look at the new chapter that has been written into the code and you compare it with almost any use permit statute you wish to read in and around the state of California, it has far more detailed standards than any I've ever written or seen. So I disagree. There are plenty of, there's plenty of hooks and standards for a hearing officer to apply. The only specific guideline that, again, that looks like dispersment or spatial comes from, a good idea that concerned citizens gave us about applying the APA standard. And we have incorporated that in the ordinance. The other thing I want to say is, these uses are here and I, you know, understand why people are upset. These uses are here. You take all these uses, some of which, we've seen blocks with eight, seven or eight of them right there clumped together, and now you apply a thousand-foot dispersment standard to those eight. And no one has suggested, and it's been asked at the Planning Commission and other places, and I have asked in meetings with attorneys representing various interested people here, how do I apply the thousand feet to those existing uses that are already there, other than taking a real hard look at those people and seeing who are causing secondary effects or problems and who aren't? So I'm right back to what we've suggested to the council. And the other thing I can say about all this is, I believe it was, who else uses this ordinance or where did it come from? Those were questions by Mrs. Otting. And another, where did the language come from? Lori Morris asked. Well, the language has come from the product of the city attorney's office, two law firms before us, concerned citizens, which actually gave us an ordinance that had been completely revised and edited by them, and the Planning Commission. And we took all of that with fresh eyes and reviewed it very carefully, met many times with concerned citizens and their attorneys, and worked through draft after draft to come up with this product, may have made a lot of changes suggested by the citizens during the last three hearings. And so that's what produced this product. And anyway, that's pretty much all I can say about standards, but it has to be remembered. You know, we can't simply come out here and validly sweep out a certain percentage of these uses. These are protected handicapped people under state and federal law. And if you forget that and you think your only goal is to protect the citizens against these physical secondary zoning effects, you're not going to have an ordinance that does anything for anybody.
Let me ask Jim the next question that came up, and that was this discussion of certified homes. Why would a certified home be beneficial as opposed to a non-certified home?
Well, I think I don't disagree with what has been said if you, in the context, they're using the word certified home. A certified home, under one of these potential programs run by Orange County, is a home that allows, if it's certified through this one process, then court referrals can be sent there. If it's not, court referrals can't be sent there. So there's some concern and consternation that we would be creating somehow new uses that would come in and get certified. And that's not what, you know, and to tell you the truth, I think we need to leave this in place for now. If they want to get rid of it after thinking about it, or the council does, with a cleanup ordinance that we could do rapidly without, before anything has to be placed in effect, that's fine. But I do not recommend that. What we really have, and by the way, we didn't write this language. This has been here since we walked in. So this dates all the way back to the Planning Commission and this is the first time today that we heard, Cynthia Kohler sent several emails, we heard that there was some problem with this. What this attempts to do is require any operator that is non-licensed, that is, does not have a state license and therefore is not giving treatment. That's your problem. Your problem are the unlicensed facilities, six or under in town that proliferated, that do not give treatment. They also don't have to answer to anybody at the present time and never had to. And unless we do an ordinance that makes them have, that applies operational standards to them, they never will. Yes, we can control how they impact the neighborhood, but we can't control part of that which is inherent in their operations. So this section that has been mentioned, which is subsection three on page 66 of the ordinance, which has been in there since we first looked at it, no one's mentioned this, all it says is, if somebody's going to qualify for a use permit and there is an available certification process on the operations that is available to them, whether it's a governmental agency like the state, ADP actually has a process for non-licensed facilities that don't offer treatment. The one mentioned in here is Orange County, which has an adult alcohol and drug sober living facility certification program. That's the one necessary for court referrals and there are others. So what this ordinance says is, you don't operate in town unless you go through one of these processes and somebody looks at your operations. So let me go to the one that's being complained about specifically because, since I heard about this today, I printed out the program that's run by essentially the sheriff's department. And it has a whole lot of features people here have asked for, for all three months I've had the pleasure to be here. A lot of features, like criminal background checks for every staff member, random drug tests for the house managers for every one of these facilities, precludes anybody with a violent crime in their past or arson in their past, or any sex offense in their past from being allowed to occupy, to be treated in any of these facilities. It requires each facility to comply with all local zoning ordinances. So it doesn't replace your ordinance. It's an additional operational requirement. It lasts a year. It has to be re-upped. Everybody who works at the facility gets a criminal background check from the police department. And it's completely voluntary. The only time somebody, nobody has to do this. We're saying, you don't have to do this. You have to do something like it so that you can demonstrate to the hearing officer and ultimately the residents and the city council that you're a legitimate operation, not a flop house, not someplace where anybody can show up and say, look, we're all recovering. There's six of us in here. Give us a CUP. So that was the thought behind this. I can't recommend taking it out because I think it was a good idea. It wasn't my idea, but I continue to think it's a good idea. And I don't think it's going to encourage people seeking certification to get court referrals any more than it's always been the case. It's the case today. It can be the case tomorrow. It can be the case after this ordinance is adopted. The other part of that that came up tonight-
Excuse me, Jim. I'd like to ask a question here.
Sure.
Clarification.
Sure.
The inclusion of this requirement to obtain a certification, can that in any respect entitle an applicant by right to be permitted to operate? I mean, is it in the same nature as a state licensed facility, a facility licensed by the state of California, six and under, which we may not regulate at all and which we cannot stop from entering our community? Does this certification requirement, which I understand to be an additional requirement of the process, can it result in, by right, the approval of more homes than if it weren't in the ordinance?
No. It is subordinate to the, and as a matter of fact, states, there has to also be compliance with the city zoning ordinance, which in the case of what we're recommending is a use permit process. So, and, you know, I don't know who, what operator, that's a shoe stream operator that shouldn't be in this town, that's causing secondary effects in the neighborhood, doesn't drug test anybody, has anybody flop in there from time to time who wants to, actually going to go through one of these programs and then seek a CUP from you? I think that's very doubtful. So I think it has a lot of positive impacts. But again, we're not going to die on this hill if the residents feel that this provision now here at the end of the road is an exposure to them rather than helpful to them. You know, I mean, I understand why they're saying that. I don't see it that way, but they see it that way. I can't recommend taking this out. I think the state process, ADP has a process, not a license, not anything as of right, but they do have a process to look at these non-licensed operations and tell these people to meet operational criteria. And there's a nonprofit organization operating in Orange County that's another alternative. So we think this just makes for the diminishing of these secondary effects, if anything.
Jim, one quick follow. If we were to take this out of the ordinance tonight, in your view, does that mean we would have to re-agendize this for another second hearing? Is this a substantive enough issue that would cause a delay in the enactment of the ordinance?
Yes. Robin has shared with me your charter, which mirrors state law. The only changes you're supposed to make this evening are essentially typos, clerical errors, omissions of words, items like that that don't change anything substantive. This obviously would remove a criterion that, and obviously now, one I didn't know till today, but a controversial one. So yes, you'd have to fall back to first reading.
Tim, I have another question. Assuming we did take it out of the ordinance, I mean, this is a voluntary program that facilities go through to get this certification. So even if we didn't require it, that it wouldn't stop them from going to get the certification if they wanted to.
That's right.
So if they wanted to, we'll call it get business from the sheriff's department or the courts, they could go voluntarily, get the certification and do that.
That's right. What we are requiring them to do is go to some available program to certify that their operations are essentially as safe as they could be for the community and for the people who are residing there. We don't care if it's this Orange County program, which is so comprehensive, I'll say again, I can't imagine too many trying to go through it and do that to qualify for a use permit. I don't know where it came from, but I still think it's a good idea. I understand why some don't. The other part of this question that keeps coming up is, why don't we adopt, and this is Mrs. Otting again, indicated, why don't we adopt state laws? And why don't we adopt the ADP standards? Well, the answer is, there aren't any that apply to land use. That statute doesn't talk about land use. That statute talks about going to get a license-
Excuse me, Mr. Markman. Ladies, could you please keep it down and show Mr. Markman the same respect that we showed you when you were talking?
Anyway, we've read again the ADP, the laws, all the group home laws, not just the ones that pertain to ADP, because there are other ones with other types of handicapped people. None of them are applicable to tell a city how you make land use decisions. None of them have, some of them have actually, interestingly enough, a dispersment requirement for other kinds of uses, as that AG's opinion pointed out, but they omit any kind of dispersment requirement for drug and alcohol rehab homes. But there's nothing in there to adopt where you process a license. ADP licenses treatment facilities. ADP does not license untreated facilities that do not give the specified four types of treatment. They do have a program where you can seek a certification, if that's what your operation is. None of it has anything to do with going through the zoning or land use process where we could adopt it by ordinance and have the job done. I wish it was. And I'll say again, believe me, if our firm could in good faith recommend to the council this thousand-feet criteria that people seem to think would work and make them happy, we would have been the first ones to run and say, yes, they're right, and why have any controversy over it? But we can't do it in good faith because we don't think it's going to work. We think it'll lose everybody a whole lot of time and you'll have a lawsuit that won't be, that will make the ordinance not useful to you.
Jim, I'm going to ask you to answer the next question about why the moratorium needs to end concurrently with the adoption of the effective date of this ordinance.
Okay. The moratorium is based on state planning law and it's a specific provision of the State Planning Act, which says that you can stop the establishment of uses and all building activities actually related to those uses for some period of time. It's actually up to a little more than two years in order to study the issue and to adopt a land use zoning approach to the issue. Once you've adopted, studied it, and adopted your land use approach, the basis for the moratorium disappears automatically. And I've never seen a moratorium that ended with one of the, an ordinance like this or any other implementation ordinance purport to leave the moratorium in effect. Actually, the moratorium, what it's replaced with is this new zoning ordinance, which doesn't allow any new applications for- any other implementation ordinance purport to leave the moratorium in effect. Actually, the moratorium, what it's replaced with is this new zoning ordinance which doesn't allow any new applications for any zones other than MFR and requires, as we all know and have heard for so long, the processing of these use permits for somebody who wants to maintain an operation even in the MFR zone. So that becomes immediately applicable, ninety day period for applying begins to run, other abatement periods begin to run, so there is no basis left for the moratorium. What we did maintain by way of what was in the moratorium is the right to continue the lawsuits that were filed for those who violated it and to continue enforcing violations which have occurred so they can't continue to occur. Another related point to clear up for people is if somebody came in illegally during the moratorium and that's when they established their use, that has never been a legal use. And as far as we're concerned, they're not entitled to apply for a use permit to continue to, and to continue the use that was illegal.
Next question would be the discussion about the hearing officers. Why would, why is the city unable to charge the applicants the fee to pay the cost of the hearing officers?
Well, I think I kind of made a candid statement about that the last time. The city could pass off the charge of the hearing officer to the applicant or split it with the applicant. The difference here is it's a charge that is not applied to any other land use entitlement permit in Newport Beach. And my concern is if that, if that's expense, well, there'll be some expense attached to the hearing officer himself or herself, whether it's jams or whether it's some other selection that the city council makes as to who is the hearing officer. And that, that singles out in a way all of these uses for an extra expense. I don't know that it's fatal, but I think it is singling them out and discriminating, in a sense, financially, so I encourage the council not to do that. The people are exactly right who spoke, however, it, it, it does require the city and the taxpayers to absorb an expense. The other part of that, there were, one other part of that question, and that was Lori Morris mentioned again that how Irvine and we have, I've traded her emails on this too, how Irvine and City of Brea, places I work, Rancho Cucamonga, have big deposits made to defray the costs of processing fees, and, and I guess so does Newport Beach. And then those deposits have to be maintained and hourly charges are recovered from the applicant taken out of the deposits. And you would continue to do that. The only thing, the only question is whether you would ask for those deposits to cover the cost of the hearing officers. That's not in this ordinance, by the way. The ordinance doesn't tell the council. That's a policy decision yet to come. So you have correctly noted by the people that this would be a city, a, a public expense. I think it's a prudent public expense so that none of these operators can claim financial discrimination, but that's my only point on it.
Mr. Markman, I had some questions for you on the hearing officer.
Yes.
As I understand it, it's a, that's a policy, so we're not at second reading, we don't have the same constraints as with a second hearing, second hearing, is that correct?
Yeah, the hearing officer selection or costs or all that is not, is not in this ordinance. It's a subject matter for the council to consider, but this ordinance doesn't tell you what fees to charge.
And I have a couple of questions about that. The first is for staff. The policy indicates it would be under the authority of the city manager. Would the city then be administering directly all those billings?
Yes, Councilmember DeGel.
Okay. And then my second question is that in terms of the criteria, it indicates that they have to be a, a member of the California State Bar. Certainly planners here use permits, you know, all the time, and we're talking about public expense, perhaps, you know, for example, the city of Long Beach had a longstanding zoning administrator that's now retired. And as far as the public expense, is it mandatory or is it necessary that you believe we need to have a member of the California State Bar? Or given that planners hear this, use permits all the time, if you could offer an opinion on that, I'd appreciate it.
See, Councilmember DeGel, you bring up a point that I was going to bring up just and ask for a change, just as you, the council considers this action. As you know from attachment G, council policy F twenty-six, we discuss two types of hearings. There are the hearings that we have now, which are traffic citation appeals, usually parking appeals, code enforcement appeals. Those folks do not need to be attorneys. They do need to have hearing officer experience. So I'm going to ask for an amendment to the policy that says if they're making decisions on those hearings, they don't have to be a member of the state bar, but if they're an attorney, they should be. However, in these new hearings, which would occur as a result related to these use permits for group residential uses, that indeed would require them to be, to be a practicing attorney and either in, with the state bar in good standing or having retired.
In other communities, are those hearings conducted by planners or who is conducting these hearings? There's another one.
We don't know that we have a lot of track records-
I, I have to say, where there are specific hearings, where sometimes city attorneys, employees are, become hearing officers, where you're requiring the, the, a kind of quasi-judicial hearing with findings of fact, and somebody has to write an opinion based upon substantial evidence and make the findings indicated in this ordinance, this is the kind of thing that I think is something that attorneys do, that judges do. I'm not saying that a good planner or, that a good hearing officer couldn't require, for example, the attorneys representing the applicant, the attorneys representing city staff to offer proposed findings and things like that. I've seen that done too. But somewhere along the line, legal work is going to be necessary to generate these hearing officer decisions. So that's a factor to consider. I don't think it's fatal, one way or the other, whether they're lawyers or not, but I think it's a very good idea in this case.
And in terms of these findings, I mean, after a while, they're going to kind of start to look the same, aren't they?
The conclusionary findings that you see in the ordinance will begin looking the same, but the substantial, the evidentiary, what we call the ultimate findings of fact that talk about the actual facts of that circumstance are all going to be different. And it is not true that if some, if a resident wants to go to all these hearings, I suppose they could. But what's really going to happen in, in the hearings is when you're at a location that's impacting people, the people who, who can adduce real evidence as to the kind of impacts that are being, real factual impacts, should be collected by the staff and with the help presumably of legal counsel. And all these people should be engaged as essentially witnesses who give declarations. And they're, those are people who are necessary at the hearing to get the actual circumstance on the record. That's crucial. You have to get that actual circumstance on the record to get that balance that you're after to protect the community against secondary effects and overcome the presumption that protects these handicapped people. That's, that's what it's going to be all about.
We have just a few more questions, if the council will bear with us.
Dave, if we have to stay here all night, I'm going to make sure we answer all of the questions that I wrote down, so you finish your list and then I'll see how many more we have.
Agreed, Mr. Hen. Ms. Kohler asked the question about the IROC minutes, and that was the last meeting of the IROC committee, so the net, there was never a meeting to finalize the draft, the draft minutes. So those are still in draft form. If, if Cindy has an interpretation that's not my own or Shirley's, I would like to see it, and I'm happy to make those changes if that's appropriate. I don't know that there's a tape of those proceedings. My assistant Shirley and I did that through comparing our own notes. I'm going to move next to some of Ms. Otting's questions. Dolores asked, how can we enforce the secondhand smoke requirement? And that's a good question. It's up to the operators to propose how they're not going to allow secondhand smoke to leave the property. It's a fairly easy test for us to see if secondhand smoke is leaving the property. So it's easy for us to make a finding that they're in violation of that. It's going to be up to them to figure out how to do it. It's not up to the city to figure out how to, how someone should contain smoke on property. We just know they have to do it.
Well, and there's, there's another feature of, of having permits that enforce this standard. Somebody gets a permit, this is a standard, it's automatically incorporated in the permit. If somebody, if they're out there in crowds, blowing smoke across the property line, choking Denise Oberman and her family or other people, you know, they're going to come and testify to that. They're going to report that, and that's a basis to revoke one of these operational permits. And, you know, right now, it's just there and it's not illegal and there's nothing to be done about it. But when you make that a criteria for, for your continuing to operate, you would think they would administer their operation and take care of it. If they don't, then the people can come in and they make a complaint that they're willing to certify to or do a declaration on, then it has meaning. Doesn't have meaning today, but it, it has meaning when we set a revocation hearing for one of these use permits because this activity is continuing.
Dolores also asked how Narcanon can comply with these use permit provisions. And, and again, that's going to be up to them to try and propose how they can comply. They are a licensed facility, larger than six and un, six, indeed they have upwards of, of a forty-nine person capacity. They will have to come in and show us that, to show the hearing officer that.
So it's very clear, Jim, it's very clear in your view that Narcanon will have to participate in the application process?
Narcanon's in the MFR zone, as I understand it, and they have some permit or, I, I'm not sure.
They have no permit.
They have no permit. So this would render them nonconforming. They have to come in for a use permit, yes.
Okay.
That's right.
At a minimum, they would have to comply with the use permit requirements in the ordinance, at a minimum.
Right.
Ms. Otting also asked about our ability to work with the coalition of cities that came to the conference last March. We are still very interested in pursuing legislative action or even potentially initiative action with any city that sees the problem that we do. And indeed for, as, as folks in the audience know, just for the first time ever, we have cities that are represented by legislators that are in the majority party in Sacramento. So we think we actually may have a chance at getting some state legislation passed finally. And we may see a bill introduced even within the next two weeks to that effect.
Let me return while you're getting the next subject, Dave. I left, I should have answered. Cindy Kohler asked about checking Los Angeles, if they're putting in a thousand-foot standard. We will do that tomorrow morning. The last three we checked, where there was some claim of a standard Norco, the city attorney said that they don't have one, and he put the thousand feet in, and there wasn't any basis for it other than the fact the council wanted it, and since they didn't have any such uses, he just put it in. Pasadena, city attorney was shocked that anyone was suggesting such a standard. And Oceanside does not have such a standard. So the last three we checked didn't give us any comfort that there's any validity in such a dispersment standard. But we will definitely check, see if LA has done this and if they've thought it through, maybe there's something to be learned.
I think the comment was that they were intending to, so we need to see where they are on the process.
We'll check both the planning department and the city attorney's office on that tomorrow.
Finally, Ms. Otting raised the, an issue we just talked about, whether or not the council, it's appropriate for the council to make changes to the ad hoc committee's duties with this, within this action. And as Mr. Markman discussed, yes, because it's not part of the ordinance. It's a standard agenda item that you can do on what would be the equivalent of first reading.
Dave, she also asked what other cities use this process?
I think I answered that one. Well, I, I think I tried to answer that by saying, nobody has this exact process. This is, I hope and I think, cutting edge and aggressive legislation, far more than anyone else has in California that we're aware to try to deal with this. So we know, we know this is being observed by a lot of interested people. We've heard about, from a lot of interested people.
She may have been referring to the use of a use permit process, I'm not sure, but if that was the case-
With a hearing officer.
Or with a hearing officer, yeah, the use of a hearing officer for this.
There are cities that, that send out their administrative hearings to hearing officers as a matter of course, big cities do it as a matter of course. And we, this is being done here for a couple of reasons. The major reason is the volume of stuff that you may get where you don't want the planning commission or the city council stultified essentially by nothing else to do but conduct these hearings and appeals, trial de novo. So we don't, we think one professionally-run hearing is better, appealable to the council but not to be heard anew by the council in order to make the process work efficiently. That's our major reasoning behind it.
And I think we need a clarification, because I think someone suggested that the committee would be directing the hearing officer.
Make a clarification there. As, as you can tell from your attachment relating to that committee, it's merely to communicate with staff as, as we go through that process of looking at the slate.
I'd like to follow up on that for a moment. It does say specifically in there that the ad hoc committee will be responsible for, in effect, impaneling or seeing that a slate of hearing officers is impaneled. Will there be any direct oversight, ongoing involvement by the ad hoc committee, meeting with hearing officers, giving them guidance, any of that? I'd like to, I'd like you to clarify to what extent the, the ad hoc committee should and will be involved with hearing officers once we get past this initial setup period.
Once the hearing officers are asked to contract with the city, they will act independently. They have to act independently. In fact, under a case called the Hoz case, the city will have to offer them a contract that guarantees them a certain amount of employment in this regard, and will have to say they can't be terminated because of the council not concurring with or liking the results of the hearing. So they have to, by law, have to be outside the, the control of the council insofar as the council would like certain results to occur or not occur. So they're very independent under state law, they aren't going to be supervised in their functioning. I think the supervision that everyone's concerned with was the process to pick them and employ them. After that's done, they have to do their professional job.
Finally, maybe not quite finally, Jim, you may want to comment on Mr. Nichols' assertion about the, the model that, for instance, Sober Living by the Sea uses-
Yep.
-where they have licensed facilities and unlicensed facilities and treatment is in a central location.
Yes, well, this is, we understand that's the way they operate. We do not agree that that was envisioned by state law when six or under licensed treatment facilities were exempted from any land use control by cities or counties. There has been a definition of this type of activity as integral use, which we are subjecting to these, all these same processes. At least we're going to try to, because I think there'll be a lawsuit with Sober Living by the Sea over that point as well as others. There was initial thought that was generated through the planning process with the help of concerned citizens to define integral facilities. That's where different facilities are used to treat these people. I added a definition of integral use, and integral use is where seven or more people, six of whom purport to be in a six or under unlicensed, are in recovery programming together. If they're in recovery programming together, I don't think they should be or that a court would hold that these are entitled to be exempt from city regulation. So Mr. Nichols is exactly right, and that's a cutting-edge principle in this ordinance that was commenced a long time ago with the help of concerned citizens, I think polished up a little bit by us. And we're, we're proceeding with it, and we intend to defend it as best we can.
Finally, the last speaker raised three more general questions. One, what process has the council followed? And just as a reminder to the public, I, I guess this, this started at least recently back in March with the conference of the cities where we tried to better understand what state and federal law says. And then we embarked upon a process that Mr. Markman has explained. It involved first the city attorney's office, then Goldfarb and Littman, then Richard Watson Gerchon. It involved the planning commission's hearings during the summer, and then this item finally came to you in late fall and early winter of two thousand and seven. And this is the fourth public hearing that your council has heard about that. The last speaker also asked generally what choices and priorities of the city and the city council have been expressed here, and I, you can certainly chime in if you wish, but I think the intent of the city has, the entire time, has been to reduce or mitigate or eliminate the secondhand impacts, the adverse impacts associated with an overconcentration of group residential uses. We do believe we have an overconcentration of group residential uses in Newport Beach. That, I think that's a unanimous opinion with the city staff and with the city council. Our attempt is to try and eliminate the impacts of that overconcentration and regulate it as best we can within law. And the last question she asked was how does this look to the world? I guess we are trying to go as, as far as we can reasonably go, as Jim noted, while protecting the rights of the disabled and preserving the community character that exists in Newport Beach.
I would add a quick comment to that. I think there was an article on the front page of the LA Times today about this issue here in Newport Beach, and there were quotes from other city officials in there regarding this issue.
this issue of how it looks to the rest of the world. I can tell you, the rest of the world is looking hard at what we're doing, and views Newport Beach as a bellcow for how to address this issue. And so I believe we're going to get a lot of attention from the rest of the world, and I think a lot of attention from cities that will regard this as a very comprehensive and aggressive approach to dealing with this issue.
Actually, I had an attorney I talked with today that asked about our ordinance, and I said, well, you can find it online and save yourself about $100,000.
With that, Mr. Mayor, I think we're done with our answering, unless you had questions we missed. And then, before you do move the motion, I'd just like to offer a couple of quick comments about what that motion might look like.
Okay. Mr. Hen, did you have any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I just may take a minute, yes. Lori Morris also asked a question about the timing of hearing officer meetings at a time convenient to the residents. It would be my desire, and I'm sure the rest of the council agrees with me, that we would like to arrange those meetings at a timing that will be convenient to the residents to support this process. You know, it's, it's, it's an unfortunate aspect of the ordinances that we are passing, that we are going to have to ask our residents to continue to fight for this process. It's, I regret that. It's unfortunate, but it's necessary. If they believe they should fight on this process, they have to do that. We can enforce these ordinances, and to answer Bob Rush's question, I believe we will seek to enforce these ordinances to the maximum extent that we can. Our ability to be successful with the prosecution and enforcement of these ordinances, as it relates to the existing homes that have to make applications, our ability to be successful with these ordinances will depend squarely upon the participation of the citizens most directly affected for each of these applications. There's no getting around that, and I wish that we did not have to do that, but we do. And so I'm appealing to the residents to maintain their vigilance, and their energy, and their tenacity on this issue, and their passion on this issue, to help with that. The, with regard to the cost of the ordinance, of operating the ordinance, I just wanted to add one point here, this was another question Lori had. In the materials to the staff report today, you'll see that roughly, I think, Dave, two-thirds to three-quarters of the initial implementation cost of these ordinances will, in fact, be borne by the applicants, and that's a number that probably will approach $300,000 altogether, depending upon the accuracy of your estimates about the total. I believe the total cost of implementation was in the range of $400,000, and the total cost of recompense from applicants was in the range of $300,000. There are additional ongoing costs after the initial implementation that are related to enforcement, which is, as I mentioned at the start of this hearing, we are determined to enforce our ordinances all across the board in this city. We will need, on an ongoing basis, more enforcement capability, not just for group homes, but for the whole range of enforcement of ordinances, so that we can maintain a new, higher profile diligence on that. Okay, Certified Housing, I believe the rest of Lori's questions have been answered. Bob, I responded to your statement about not believing that we will enforce the ordinances, and I guess we just have to take exception on that, and be, and agree to disagree. I believe we will. Dick Nichols did have a question regarding tracing the, the sort of meanderings of the people that are in the Sober Living by the Sea program. He said, what happens to them after they get out of the program? Where do they go? How do we trace them? I'm not exactly sure how to respond to that. I don't know, but maybe somebody else has an idea how to respond to that question. I don't believe there's any real mechanism for us to do that. If there is, maybe there's value in that, I don't know. Dave, do you have any thoughts?
Well, there, there isn't an ability by any local government to attempt to enforce a regulation requiring that someone who leaves a program actually go to a location certain or be tracked for a certain duration. I think that's certainly something that we have at, another tactic is something we've asked for in the use permit process, that there be an operations and management plan that explains how and when, and when people are discharged from the program, where they go, so they're not just abandoned, as one of the more flop-house-type facilities here in Newport has done, not just abandoned in the back alley with their gear, with no place to go.
That's all that I had, that I could write down as we went through, so.
Okay. Does anyone else on the council have any questions of staff? Councilman Perry?
No, no questions of staff. I would just make a, a couple of thoughts and observations. First of all, because he is not here to defend himself, and it's primary season, and my friend Dick Nichols wasn't wearing his Ron Paul badge, I will say that for all the people you might want to blame, Mitt Romney should not be one of them. He did run Bain Capital from 1984 to 2001. They, Bain Capital acquired CDC in 2005, long after he had left the firm, and while he was in his third year as governor. So the, perhaps the primary season has unfortunately interfered in this debate too, but he should not get blamed for it. You know, the, the rhetoric gets ramped up, and what gets lost, I think, is the fact that everyone here is sympathetic to the issues that all of you have raised today. We've listened to you now for, for many, many weeks. We've been in the community, we've talked to you, we've seen the issues as, from your perspective, and how you confront them. And the issue of overconcentration is one that we take very seriously, and have tried to craft an ordinance to address. I, I would echo Councilman Hen's comments, and I would pledge the support for the infrastructure to make this process a success, which includes court enforcement, the hearing process, and what will probably be a vigorous legal defense of this ordinance, once it's enacted.
Councilman Rosansky?
Yeah, Dave, can you clarify one thing, because several other folks here tonight mentioned it? There's an ongoing discrepancy in, about the number of beds. And I've seen our, or your number, at 500 and the change, and I've seen over 1,000. So can you at least give what the city's methodology is, or has been, in accounting for the number of beds, that we're basing overconcentration on?
Yes, Mr. Rosansky. And let me start by saying, I respect the work that the residents have put into trying to quantify the number of beds and number of homes. They've, they've put in countless hours on this, and I, I just, I have an honest disagreement with them. What we did, after, after taking their list, is to go and do a fairly thorough investigatory process associated with each resident, residents that, that was on, quote-unquote, their list. And that involved talking to the neighbors, it involved observing what, what goes on in, in that facility at different times of day, it involved communicating, attempting to communicate directly with the property owner. It involved another aspect, which I think is important, and that is, is the facility known to be affiliated with one of the, the operators that we know about in Newport Beach? Remember, we're dominated by two operators, Morningside and Sober Living by the Sea. There isn't some mystery operator out there that we don't know about, that could, that is, is holding 500 beds. So what I've said is, we can verify 503, at, at this date, beds, in about 85 different facilities, with about 28 of those being licensed. And we're attempting to verify more, as, as we hear about them, as we know about them. I will tell you that each person, each home that we may suspect to have been one, or is one today, will get a letter, ask, inviting them to come in and go through the use permit process. I haven't screened anyone out, just merely because of what I've learned.
Thank you.
Any other questions, staff, comments?
We do have one.
Yeah, I was just going to ask Dave to nominate the changes that he thinks we should be considering.
If you could thumb to page nine of the ordinance, so this is attachment A. There's a definition of residential care facilities general under section H. On the second sentence, it reads, any place, site, or building, so sorry, this is the first sentence, any place, site, or building, or groups of places, sites, or buildings, licensed or unlicensed. What I'd like to do is add licensed by the state, because that arguably is not understood, but I think that's a, just a clarification to, to refine that better. That's the only change we have to the ordinance. The next one, next suggested change is, as I mentioned, with Councilmember Dagel, and attachment G, council policy F26, under the qualifications of the hearing officers, and this is only for appeals relating to Newport Beach Municipal Code, section 1.08055. So that's on page 26 now of your document. That third bullet point should say, if applicable, comma, be a member of the California State Bar. And as, as I noted with Councilmember Dagel, this does not relate to hearing officers with, addressing the subject at hand tonight. This is the ones dealing with traffic tickets. And then, a clarification for the record, and for the city clerk, on the next page, page 27, it's still in that council policy. At the end of the last bullet, it says that, "A hearing officer shall have no conflict of interest or ethical barrier regarding the specific case that the officer will hear, and that each candidate's interests shall be reviewed in an opinion offered by qualified legal counsel prior to employment as a hearing officer." The intent of that second sentence is to say that each candidate's potential conflicts of interest shall be reviewed and an opinion offered. And that's probably an appropriate amendment to make to that council policy, to make it more clear. It was an attempt to measure interest in just being a hearing officer.
May I ask a follow-up question to that last item? Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. I'm presuming that it's RWG that will be helping us with the review of the hearing officer candidates, or helping staff with the review, this outside council review. Is that correct?
Certainly, that's staff's intent, yes.
Yeah, okay. And as a part of that review, would it be fair to say that RWG will be exploring whether or not there is any connection from, with a hearing officer candidate as, between any present or past financial interest in a group home operator amongst him or his immediate family? Any representation of group home operators in the past? I mean, is it fair to say that you're going to do a thorough explanation, do exploration to assure that there is no such connection with these candidates that are recommended for consideration?
Yes, that would be our intent, and please notice it's broader than financial conflicts. We also talked about ethical barriers, and that was our language. So that if it's an attorney with past representation, that would be an ethical barrier. And we won't be looking for waivers. We'll be looking for someone who doesn't need a waiver.
Okay, if there's no further comments from the council, the motion would be in order for the recommended actions, as modified by Mr. Kiff.
So moved with the changes expressed by Mr. Kiff.
Seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I do have one further comment.
Okay.
We, we have, and I made a long speech last time, and I'm not going to make another long speech. We, we have heard a lot tonight about what these ordinance fall short with, that the residents would like them to do more than they do. Frankly, I would like them to do more than they do. I don't disagree with that. What we should still bear in mind, though, is that these ordinances do do a lot. They do prohibit the location of any new group home operation, and anything but an MFR district. That includes any new ones on the peninsula, as well as the, anywhere else in the city. I'm not aware of any other city in the state of California that has adopted an ordinance that's as aggressive as that, in terms of the location of new ones. I'm not aware of any other ordinance in the state of California that has adopted a definition of integral facilities and integral uses. I fully expect, as a measure of the aggressiveness of this ordinance, that we'll be sued perhaps more than once, over at least that issue, and maybe others in these ordinances. There are, these ordinances have by far the longest list of qualifications, requirements, investigations, application information, and findings of any ordinance passed anywhere in the state of California that I'm aware of, and I'm sure our outside council has studied this more than I have, but if they, if they are, they should correct me. These taken together, I believe, do constitute a very substantive attack on this issue, and substantive from the perspective of the existing homes on the peninsula, which I believe will be, you know, addressed uniformly here, all of them. And it, I believe that this issue of overconcentration will be substantially mitigated by the operation of this ordinance, and appropriately mitigated by this, by the operation of this ordinance. And so I believe, while it doesn't do everything that the residents would like, it accomplishes a great deal. And I would not want to leave the public at large, and the people in this room, with an impression otherwise, as we close this out. And again, I am asking that the residents continue to support this to the best of their ability. I do hope, to the extent that they have financial resources and legal resources, that they bring those to bear in a constructive way, to help these ordinances become as effective and, and conclude as effectively as possible. And would ask that you consider that, when you think about what you're going to use your financial resources for. And so with that, I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. We're going to vote on this momentarily. I would ask that, that, once the vote is completed, that you leave as quietly as possible, and carry on any discussions outside, as we have other business we have to attend to this evening. So I'd appreciate that courtesy. Please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much for attending. Okay, we're getting back to item number 18, that's assessment district number 92. Do we have a report on the vote?
Yes, we do, Honorable Mayor. Based on the tabulation of the ballots that were received, there were 64% of the ballots were submitted in favor of the assessment district, for a total assessment of $1,107,858.87. Thirty-six percent of the votes were submitted in opposition, for a total of $611,569.02. Based on that tabulation, it is appropriate now for the council to, if it's their desire, to proceed with the formation of the assessment district, by adopting the resolution confirming the assessments, which that resolution is the formal action declaring the results of the ballot procedure, ordering the acquisition of the improvements, confirming the assessments, and approving the final assessment engineer's report.
Okay, Councilman Webb has volunteered to make the motion, since he has so much experience with this.
Well, actually, what I'd like to do is first congratulate Ned McCune, who is the person that has pushed this tirelessly for the last two or three years at least. He spent a lot of time and effort, and, and congratulations to Ned. And I'd like to make the motion on adopting the resolution declaring the wording that is in the staff report, and also approving the budget amendment that is listed in the staff report.
Seconded.
Okay. All those in favor, please cast your votes.
Motion carries.
Okay, let's see. Now we're down to public comments. Madam Clerk?
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, anyone having a public comment, please step forward. These are on non-agenda items.
Good evening, Mayor Selig, council members, and staff. My name is Wendy Brooks, and I'm a resident of Newport Beach. Recently, a number of false and deliberately misleading statements have been delivered to the citizens of Newport Beach regarding the issue of whether our city hall should be built within a small, only three-acre portion of the total city-owned 12.8-acre site adjacent to the main Newport Beach library in Newport Center. These falsehoods have appeared in the form of campaign signs, letters in the Daily Pilot, as well as circulars through the mail. I wish to set the record straight. Every single one of the objections presented has been addressed and countered in detail. Please see page A7 in today's Daily Pilot. Even though the land Even though the land to which we are referring was originally dedicated as open space with a four-acre park allowed some time ago, circumstances have changed. In all these years, nothing has been done about developing a park, nor, in the meantime, have we been successful in finding a truly suitable location for a new city hall. There are a total of twelve-point-eight acres in Newport Center Park, and the new city hall, as it is currently planned, would take only three, still leaving almost ten full acres. Be sure to see the wonderful four-color rendering of the plan, bearing in mind that this area of the city already has an overage of passive park acreage according to the recreation element of the general plan. Pardon me. The city already owns the land, eliminating an eight-million-dollar expenditure which would have to be incurred with the purchase of another parcel, and eliminating the phase, eliminating phasing the process of having to relocate people and equipment during construction, which would be necessary if we were to try to rebuild on the existing site. Additionally, there has been talk that building within the park would be more costly due to engineering issues, also untrue. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to create an actual civic center by building our new city hall adjacent to the main Newport Beach library. The plan also includes much-needed additional parking for the library's many valuable programs, not to mention how much more likely Newport Center Park is to be used when it is part and parcel of an entire complex, rather than being off by itself bordered by two major thoroughfares. A few people have expressed concern about possibly losing the exquisite view. There is absolutely no need for worry on that score. The landform will be modified to create a lower terrace for the city hall, so that the highest point will be below the view plane from MacArthur Boulevard and the homes in Harborview Hills. Last is the issue of traffic. The entrance will be off of Avocado, where traffic would not be a problem on that particular block. And the stoplights could be watched and actually be controlled by live people in real time by a new city program. Concerning potential traffic, be aware that the alternative site, five-hundred Center Drive, Newport Center Drive, is also in Newport Center, hence the street name. Now is your chance to be proactive about your community. Exercise your right to vote on February fifth by voting yes on Measure B. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else wishing to address the council under public comments?
Good evening, Tom Olson, Corona Del Mar. Same subject. If somebody were to ask me, "Why do you vote, why should I vote no on Measure B?", I'd say, "I'll give you my top ten reasons." Number one, you don't buy the assertion that that land is free because the city owns it. If I trade in the family jewels for a vacation home, is it free, a vacation home or jewels? Come on, we know that's a shell game. That land is worth probably twenty to twenty-five million dollars on the open market, worth it for sale. That's the true cost of that land. It's not free. Reason number two, you think it's insane for the public to direct the council on administrative matters like what kind of pencils it should buy, or where it should put the city hall. Number three, we deplore the making of irreversible long-term decisions on the impulse of a one-time ballot. Laws can be reversed, the location of the city hall cannot. Number four, you happen to believe promises should be kept. When land is dedicated as open space in perpetuity, when it's chosen to be a park, when thousands of volunteer hours are being devoted to it, when it's named a park, when it's confirmed as a park by the city council four times, it's time to proceed with developing it as a real park, instead of weed parks had to be so far. Reason number five, you detest mindless developments, and nothing can be more mindless than consuming a park for a building. Reason number six, you resent bait and switch. The bait, you've heard it tonight, is a low-profile building that won't hurt anybody. The switch is the reality. Nowhere in Measure B is there a single building specification or mention of a park. The builder is free to do as he wishes. Number seven, you're offended by a heavily financed, slick, deceptive publicity campaign aimed at circumventing hard-won city controls on building height, density, and traffic. Reason number eight, you see this as a thin end of the wedge. What can happen in Newport Center Park can happen anywhere, anytime after that precedent has been set. Reason number nine, let's not overlook this, you want a park. And finally, reason number ten, you're pretty fed up now, and you'd like to see city hall stay in its historic location right here. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Marsha Dasi, and I am a resident of Newport Beach. I would like to express my support for Measure B, and iterate that everyone needs to vote on Measure B, hopefully yes. The current city hall is not a big traffic generator, and they rotate staff who work four-ten-hour days, alternating Mondays and Fridays. I would also like to express my disappointment in the mistruths being stated by the opponents and other known and unknown mistakes spoken by some council members. The city hall in the park land was designated by the Irvine Company as open space with the possibility of a four-acre park. Both the old and new general plan designate the land as open space. As late as nineteen ninety-seven, it was considered for senior housing development. Approval of Measure B will ensure a site that the city will have next to the library to build a new city hall. Vote yes on Measure B. Thank you.
I think this has gone around and around and around, and I think we've looked at most of the places in the city that seem to be a possible. And when we did this, we couldn't come up with anything anywhere near as good. When we look at the park, if we really want to make a park out of that, the environmentalist said, "For fifty thousand dollars a stem, we can even fill that upper land and make a beautiful park there with a beautiful view of the city up there toward San Miguel." So the stems would cover drainage ditches, which has so little water in them that they are cesspools. So it doesn't involve, involve a big problem there, and makes the park even bigger and usable. The second thing about that is, is that we can still use the money. We just have to use it again in the city for environmental-type affairs. So that could be mitigated pretty easy if we want to make a prettier park, if we want to do it right. But that isn't, that hasn't been suggested at all so far. Lastly, this, this thing of traffic gridlock, the present site that's been offered there behind the medical center will be surrounded by an eighteen-hundred-car, five-story parking lot, as presently proposed. What a wonderful thing to look out to on the one side, and the two-story parking lot on the other side of the medical center will prevent anybody from being in city hall seeing any view. So on one side, you look up and you see this huge parking lot, and on the other side, you see another parking lot. Getting to that area is quite difficult right now. It's only going to get worse. So when you talk about traffic gridlock, that is a perfect site for traffic gridlock. I mean, they don't even propose going out Avocado as a way to, to, to make it easier to get in and out of it. If you go out toward San Miguel, there's not enough room there to get to the, to make that a full intersection, so you basically can't get across into the left-hand turn lane to, to go north. So you'd be, it's a, it's a terrible place to go. Nobody has figured out how you would make it work from a traffic standpoint that I've seen, and I've seen no offerings in that regard. So my point is, is that this truly is the best place that we've found. It's, it's a very ideal area. It's close to the library, which needs parking. It seems like it's ideal. It's our land, we don't have to pay for it. We get money from the Irvine Company, the same as the other place, so I don't see any negatives. It seems to all be positive. Thank you very much. I hope you all vote for Measure B.
Okay, anyone else?
Good evening, thank you, council and, and mayor. My name is Deborah Schultz. I'm a longtime resident of Newport Beach, moved down here in nineteen eighty. But prior to that, I kind of grew up down here on weekends. My dad had a boat down here, and we were fortunate enough to have it at Hearth Harbor, which was owned by Ed Hearth, and he was at that time mayor of Newport Beach. So that was kind of a neat thing to, to see that on that level as a kid. And, you know, coming down here as long as I have, since I was three or four years old, I mean, I saw a ton of development and things mushrooming, and I remember we all laughed when we first saw Promontory Point being built, because that was just such bizarre-looking construction for that time. But, but to make, to kind of bring this home is that, you know, I've seen this city very much grow from nothing on jamboree except tents when they had the Boy Scout jamboree to what it is today. And I've seen Fashion Island become really the center point of the city as the city has expanded. And I'm definitely for yes on Measure B, and I hope that you will see fit to vote accordingly. The benefit is a beautiful civic center that would include the library and city hall together. The view plane ordinance is fully respected. It still needs to be respected even if, if a park is there. Trees cannot be, be grown to pierce that view plane, so that the people in the Harborview Hills are protected. I think that it's very fitting for the cultural presence of our city to have a cutting-edge civic center. It's a beautiful site. Plus, there would still be parkland and open space, as something for everyone. The traffic situation would be fully mitigated, and that's all a part of the ordinance for any development that would have to occur by the Irvine Company. So whether they're building four-hundred-and-thirty more apartment units and seventy-eight thousand more square feet of retail, they're still going to have to be, you know, working on mitigating any traffic concerns. The opposition has really sent out some fear tactics. When I look at the word "gridlock," I think of the four or five freeway. I'm in medical sales, I know what it's like to drive up to UCLA during those traffic hours. When I see Fashion Island, Newport Beach down here, I don't, I don't consider that gridlock in any way, shape, or form. Everyone's in agreement that the San Miguel intersection could use some work, and that would be fully mitigated. Also, thirteen million dollars would be saved with this, with the Ficker proposal, as well as the fact that the city already owns the property, and the city would not have to jump in bed, if you will, with the Irvine Company by purchasing another, using another eight million dollars to purchase Irvine Company's site as an alternative. So I encourage you all to vote yes on Measure B, and to really continue the beauty and growth of our, our wonderful city of Newport Beach. That view plane will be respected, so as you drive down MacArthur, you're always going to see that gorgeous ocean, and we're very blessed to live down here. Thank you.
Don't all jump up at once?
My name is Jo Vander Voort. I've been in the town for fifty-six years. I live in Newport Beach. That almost tells my age, but not quite. I was very young.
Very, very young.
Very, very young. I have a page speech. I'm not giving it. You've heard all the reasons. They're good reasons. They're valid reasons by thinking people. I am voting yes on Measure B. I would hope all of you would, too.
I'm Seymour B., I live on Balboa Island. I'm not telling you how long I've lived here. About two years ago, when there was no real viable plan on where to put city hall in a new location, Bill Ficker shared with me his plan to put city hall next to the library on Avocado Avenue. And I thought it was a great idea, and I haven't heard anything since to change my mind, so I'm voting yes on Measure B. And I want to thank you for reminding me of Restraint Week, but I think it's a little too late tonight, but there's always tomorrow.
Seymour, are you older than the Balboa Ferry?
No, but his father put the salt in the ocean.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Bill Ficker, and this is the last council meeting, as I bet you know as well as I do, before the February fifth election, at which Measure B, city hall in the park, will be addressed. And I'd like to just read a few remarks. Our plan is a simple one, straightforward, easy to construct, and inexpensive. The project is a forty-one-million-dollar project. There are simply no massive retaining walls and fifty-five thousand dollars per car subterranean parking, as has been indicated by some of our opposition. It will be hard to find eight million dollars in cost savings in a project of this size in order to purchase a block five-hundred site if Measure B is defeated. Our project stands alone from the present North Newport Center approval conflicts. It will not create years of delay as indicated by some. Our opposition is using costs and information based on invalid plans that were prepared by Daniel Mann Johnson and Mendon Hall. That was a fifty-five-million-dollar project with the subterranean parking and thirty-five-foot-high retaining walls, which we don't, have never have had in our project. Please, as a council, reflect the integrity that we have tried to demonstrate and show leadership, rather than instilling fear, that if we do anything at all on the park site, it will fail. The city hall and Irvine development won't be done for at least three years. A traffic level of service can easily be achieved by intersection improvements and signal modernization. And I, remember, we need inspiration, and as King Whitley Jr. wrote, "Change has a considerable psychological impact on the human mind. To the fearful, it is threatening, because it means that things may get worse. To the hopeful, it is encouraging, because things may get better. And to the confident, it's inspiring, because a challenge exists to make things better." I think that the city of Newport Beach should reflect confidence and not fear. Please don't succumb to endorsing this fear and invalid cost and conflicts, and please vote yes on Measure B. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Karen Tringali from Corona Del Mar with very cold hands. We've heard, we've read and heard comments this evening, talking about plans, talking about reasons, talking about misunderstandings, information that perhaps misleads the public. I just want to take a couple of minutes this evening and just simply talk about some facts, nothing more. Fact is that no self-respecting city or government body creates an amendment to put an address in one city charter or constitution. The only way to undo that is by another expensive voter election. Fact, there are other options available, none of which will be available once city charter is amended without another costly election. Those options that are available are one that is in the center of Newport Beach, there's one that's right here at its current location, both of which offer economic solutions and fewer constraints. and fewer constraints than City Hall and the Park. Fact, if City Hall and the Park or Measure B passes, not only will we have the 72,000 square feet allocated to that office facility, there'll be another 72,000 square feet of office space built in or around the 500 block that was offered to the city for City Hall location. And 72,000 square feet is sort of a hard frame of reference, and someone pointed out to us that the new building that's being constructed in Corporate Plaza, that's right off of PCH and Irvine Terrace, is about a 40,000-square-foot building. So if you think of 40,000 square feet and potentially 114,000 square feet within two blocks of each other, that's almost three times the size of the existing building that's being constructed over there in Corporate Plaza. Not only do you have the building, the mass of the building to contend with, but you also have, of course, double the traffic to accommodate those two office structures. And I know this isn't a fact, but one of the mitigation things may certainly be an HOV, High Occupancy Vehicle Ramp, over and around MacArthur Boulevard, Avocado, and San Miguel. I'll go back to facts. Facts, the language in the initiative itself, and that is what we are voting on, the initiative, contains only a vague reference to City Hall, administrative offices, and parking. And it's situated on a 12-point-acre site. There's absolutely no mention of scale, no mention of space, no mention of where or what portion of that 12.8-acre parcel this building will be situated on. That's what we're voting on. Newport Center, fact, Newport Center Park was promised, dedicated, named, and planned for Newport Beach residents. Those plans include amenities which cannot be implemented with City Hall and the Park. What remains is a drainage of oil suitable for flora, fauna, but little else. Fact, Newport Beach voters do not need the Daily Pilot to tell us the facts. Newport Beach voters do not need shiny mailers and signs to tell us the facts. The most important facts surrounding Measure B are right here in the public records. The fact is Newport Beach voters know the facts, and they will show so at the polls on February 5 by voting no on Measure B. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Ron Hendrickson. I live in the Port Streets. I'm going to move quickly here, too, with the three minutes. There is an article in Daily Pilot today discussing the litigation that the Defend the Bay people have filed against the city and the Irvine Company. And for the councils and public's benefit, I'm going to just make a few comments here. The 430 apartment unit portion of the Irvine Company Newport North Development Agreement, we believe, is sufficiently covered by the general plan, in which it was included, and the EIR for the general plan included the residential units. The $27 million in development fees and the $11 million in lieu park fees, half of which would go to the Oasis Project as a, in the form of a matching grant. The city has, and since we believe the city has properly covered the residential development in the EIR, we believe these fees will still be intact, as designated for the benefit of City Hall construction and Oasis. If the voters approve Measure B with their yes vote, we believe the City Council will be able to move ahead with the City Hall next to the library. The longer we wait, the higher the costs go. We don't agree with Councilman Curry's negative take that the City Hall could be tied up in court, forcing the city to borrow the necessary funds. Where we do think the litigation may have impact is on the $8 million Irvine Company City Hall site option in Block 500. That is going to be held up for a long period. It could, possibly could be. That's what may be held up, not the City Hall and the Park. Because the office portion of the development agreement was converted from hotel rooms, this may be the area for which the litigants may be asking for more environmental work. With this new wrinkle, the no-on-B people are now touting going back to the existing site. Since several years and over a million dollars have been spent on the problematic existing site, we believe it's time to move on and vote yes on B, and let's have a great City Hall, Central Library, and Park combination, which we can all be very proud of. Thank you. Vote yes on B.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Jan Vanersdood. I live in Newport Heights. I'm here to urge people to vote no on B. I think that not, it's not going to be a City Hall that we can be proud of. It's a City Hall that will be voted by people with so little information. And right now, Measure B only states that the city charter will be changed forever to locate City Hall behind the library. I'm not sure if people know of all the ramifications of doing that, but one is, is that we cannot go back, the City Council cannot go back and change that decision. It only can be changed by another citizen's initiative. In the meantime, it's not an ideal site for a City Hall that we can all be proud of. It's a hillside. The hillside has to be dredged out. The hillside has to be excavated. The only credible report that has been done on the cost of excavation is the July 2007 report that you commissioned as a city council, and in this report, it states that the cost of preparing the site at the library is $6.554 million. That's to prepare the site. That's to dig out the hillside. It's to put retaining walls on, because you're taking down about 30 feet. We're excavating about 65,000 cubic yards. This is hardly the ideal site for a City Hall. The cost of building City Hall on this site with this study in July of 2007 was $55 million. That is much more than the cost of rehabilitating our current site at $48 million. I'd like to show you what the footprint of the site that was analyzed by the consultant in July of 2007 shows this area here that's right next to the library comprising 3.7 acres. I'd like to also show you the mailer that was sent out by the yes-on-B folks today, showing the City Hall site occupying about half of the park site, which would be equivalent to some six acres. The point is that the land area that is occupied by the Ficker Plan is bigger than the area that was estimated by the city's consultant, which may make that $6.5 million excavation cost much more with the Ficker Plan. And I should add that the Ficker Plan is not what we're voting on. What we're voting on is a charter amendment. It's an irreversible charter amendment. It's something that we should not be doing without full disclosure, without full environmental impact analysis, and we have none. Vote no on Measure B for good governance. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Nancy Skinner, and I live in Newport Beach. And I am here to support the Ficker Concept Proposal and yes on Measure B, and I respectfully understand that some of my good friends support the other side, but I want to say that I really do think that they are giving you information, or at least to the city, that is not really accurate. And one of the reasons I'm saying that is because the Ficker Proposal, all of this has to do with using that particular site, doesn't specify how that building is going to be built. It doesn't specify how you're going to do the parking garage. He's giving you his concept of how it could go, and so all of that is left up to you. And if you want to put something that's much more expensive on, I guess you have that right, but he has had it fully vetted by various friends and professionals who know how much it costs to excavate, knows how much it costs to build the parking garage, and knows that it doesn't need to be underground, all of those things. And so his figures, I think you can find that are very solid, and if you, but it doesn't say that he's going to use his, anything more than his concept of putting it in that location. That will be your choice. I certainly hope you don't spend unnecessary money and spend the kind of dollars that you just heard the previous speaker talk about. I also want to tell you that, in my opinion, I think you'll end up with a net gain of open space. The Irvine Company is giving a little over three acres. This particular property would be still owned by the city, and it would certainly be short-sighted of the City Council if they were to sell it, because it's hard to get city-owned property back again. So we would have this as open space. We'd have the additional part that's being given by the Irvine Company, so we would actually have a net gain in open space by putting the City Hall behind the library. I think traffic shouldn't be a problem. Most people would probably come by way of the Coast Highway and go up Avocado, and the other option would be through Farallon, and we all agree that one intersection on San Miguel and Avocado needs help, no matter where the City Hall goes, because it's going to be more impacted, I think, by the big developments in the Irvine Company. I'm hoping that we will all vote yes on Measure B, and so that we can end up with a City Hall that we can be proud of, have maybe a charming look to it, maybe that's not the right word, but something that reflects the really wonderful community that this is. I'm concerned about the 500-block small size, that we'd end up with a high rise without much greenery around it, and to me, that just doesn't make the kind of City Hall that I think Newport Beach deserves. I really can see a beautiful City Hall, no views lost, no problems cost-wise. It'd be less expensive than the one on the 500 block, and I certainly hope that you will all vote yes on Measure B. Thank you.
Next.
Oh, boy. Your Honor, members of the council, my name is Hugh Logan, and I'm a resident of Newport I've listened to the arguments again tonight, and I can't help but remember that we were going to have a free City Hall in the Park, and then we were going to have a City Hall in the Park that was $26 million less expensive. The Daily Pilot, that has been a proponent of City Hall in the Park from the beginning, a couple Sundays ago, headed down, just considering two cost elements, to a $1 million advantage, and now it's back to a $13 million advantage. Now, the one authoritative authorized study that was done was the DIMJIM study, and that showed that there was a $7 to $10 million advantage for the 500 block of Newport Center. Now, how do we square the circle on this? Well, what we found the other night at the Rotary Club was that the $13 million advantage comes from a private study that was funded by the City Hall and the Park people. At that Rotary meeting, they declined to give any details of the study, saying that when you show yours, we'll show ours. Well, the DIMJIM study has been on the city's website since July, so anybody who wants to take a look at it, it's all there, all the numbers that we've used are derived directly from that. And the point is, that was done for comparison purposes. It was to make easy comparisons. It didn't talk about the style. It didn't talk about particular technique. It just said, hey, a square foot of office building costs this many dollars. We don't care how clever you're going to be. That's the base that we're going to measure from. Now, a lot of things have been said about the space in City Hall in the Park, and one of these, which I found very interesting, was that now we're going to get, on 2.8 acres, we're going to get the parking, and we're going to get 72,000 square feet of office space, and we're not going to go up, and we're not going to go down. And this is very interesting to me, because I just don't see how you can do that. That seems to violate some physical principles. But nonetheless, that was in one of the recent things. So what I'm saying is, you know, we've been all over the map on this thing about who's telling the story and who's not telling the truth on this thing, but I find it very ironic that we have all these different numbers coming out from the City Hall and the Park people. It does not appear to me we're going to have a park at City Hall and the Park. We're just going to have a City Hall, and yet, we are constantly being told that it is the no on Measure B people who are telling the story. They're not telling the truth. That's what people keep saying. And yet, I think if you look at what I've been telling you this evening, if you consider the fact that you're not really going to get a park and a City Hall in the six acres that are left beyond the environmental park, it should be clear. So I hope all of you will inform yourselves. That's the important thing. I hope you will vote, and I know that you'll vote no on Measure B. Thank you.
I wasn't going to talk, but I have to. A year ago, we were here. Oh, what is my name? Novella Hendrickson. Thank you. A year ago, the majority of, we came here thinking that we were going to try to ask the council to please postpone beginning a phased park on this area and wait until they had found, the City Council had found, a location for the City Hall. What happened was that instead of the council rising to the occasion and finding common ground with two elements that wanted something different, they proceeded to begin a, to try to build a park on that area. And interestingly enough, in '05, when the council decided to form a committee of citizens to find a location, opening it to everyone, it was in the Daily Pilot. Everyone, give your ideas. And of course, the next meeting, that site was taken off the list, wasn't it? That's what happened. Instead of the council being the administrators, they began to be micromanagers in designing what they would like a park to be built on that site. Instead of a park that we usually have, it was a park that was going to be in three Interestingly enough, the literature that the no-on-B has, has a picture of a park that was a concept in '05 but never came to the council for a vote. The first phase of this park that was begun in '07 has to, part of it has to be torn down to put Phase 2 on, and so that costs a lot of money. The Ample Theater is a 40-foot climb on stairs with some walk between them. The ADA ramp comes in the second phase with a 250-foot switchback climb to this Ample Theater. And as of July, this park cost $5 million. Instead of concentrating on fiduciary duties, our council went ahead and looked
Instead of concentrating on fiduciary duties, our council went ahead and looked at the OTCA site, this one that we're talking about tonight. And this was the, all of you know, it's where the Transportation Center is. What had to happen on that is really crazy. You'd have to buy that site, and then buy the Irvine Company site, the open space site, and then you would have to tear down the OTCA site and build the City Hall. Maybe you'd build the transportation site first, and then go back and build the City Hall. All this costs a lot of money. And when, later on, they asked to look at the library site. Now, needless to say, they didn't have much time, and in July, they came back with a message that the OTCA site was $10 million more than the one that was on the library site. So now we go round and round, and our opposition uses that study. It has nothing to do with anything. It's been shelved, and it should be for good reason. It was an idea that should never have been done. So we're back to the one that the council would like you to consider eventually. Hopefully, everything will go well. It's the Irvine Company site, and that's where we are today. The City Hall and the park has never been changed. It's always been the same, three acres for the City Hall and the rest for the park. And I don't think it's very difficult concept. We're not in the design stage. We do have professionals who have come up and used their time to do it. So I want to urge all of you to vote yes on B.
I wasn't going to speak because I'm a little shy, but I thought since I came back, I would. I'm going to read my thoughts because otherwise I will start to ramble. I want to start off, my name's Kathy Hoffman. I live in Irvine Terrace. I want to start off by saying that this is the first time I've ever felt the need to put a political sign in the front yard of our home. I feel this is such an important issue that I wanted everyone in my neighborhood to know that we are against Measure B. In preparing this statement for tonight, I tried to think of the most important reason why I was against it and couldn't come up with just one, because all of my reasons are important. So I will briefly list them in no particular order. If Measure B passes, there is no turning back. If the cost to excavate and build at the park site exceed the estimates, we will have no choice, and taxpayers will have to foot the bill no matter the cost. Enough of us have built or remodeled homes to know that costs will exceed. There is a lot of unknown. I don't know about you, but I do not want to pay any more in taxes than we have to. We live very close to the park site and witnessed firsthand the traffic at the intersections of San Miguel and MacArthur and Avocado. This is not just at rush hours. There is not an appropriate egress-degress at this site, and a City Hall here will only make it that much worse. Why not rebuild at the current site? It's served Newport Beach well for years. I believe the only reason other sites were considered was the cost, and I believe a building at the current site would be the least expensive of any of the other options on the table. If Mr. Thicker and Company want to leave a legacy for Newport Beach, let them design a better building for either the current City Hall site or at the 500-block site. At either site, they could have the crown jewel they desire for Newport Beach, and it would be less divisive for our city. I believe that Measure B was initially written to get a site that was less expensive than the current City Hall site and more central in Newport Beach. We have that option now with the 500-block site. The park site was designated as open space and should remain as open space, especially since there are less expensive options for the City Hall. The majority of our elected officials voted at least two or three times against the City Hall and the park, and we need to honor this decision and protect the rights of all of the citizens in Newport Beach. I urge you to vote no on Measure B. Thank you.
Do you think you're the last one, Dolores?
I don't know. I don't know. Hi, my name is Dolores Oding. I live in Newport Beach. And these are the reasons why I'm, these are the reasons why I will be voting yes on Measure B. To begin with, building on this site would mean that we would have to relocate staff for two, three, four years, depending upon what goes on, and the cost of that was never explained to us. Secondly, we already own the property at the, at the library. With the $8 million that we don't spend to buy the City Hall site at Fashion Island, then we could actually maybe build a police substation or a fire station up at Newport Coast, or that could be put towards the City Hall site at the library. I did attend the meetings on the location for the City Hall. I did attend the meetings on the finance. I have been involved in this process for years. The property that we're talking about is in the general plan as open space. If we build it at Fashion Island, that's an 1,800 parking structure, parking lot, I mean, parking structure. I would never even want to attempt to go in one of those things. Also, we never own it. We get to build it, and we get to build it at the cost that they say we have to spend per parking space. We have no control of it. Then we get an easement to use it, and that's how we get around the charter that says we can't have anything for 25 years. We can't have contracts for more than 25 years. And so then we get to pay maintenance fees, assessment fees, and everything for the rest of our lives and for our children's lives, and for how long that goes on. I don't think that's a burden that we're supposed to place on the next generation. I think we're supposed to own what we have. There'll still be a nine-acre, eight-acre site with the City Hall at the library. We'll actually be able to use the library. There will be a space at the library that our mayor at the City Hall will be able to go to and put, park his Hummer at, which is not available at our current library. Okay? I saw you out in the street at the meeting. Okay? I parked behind you. Okay? And also, it will be safer, okay, to have a City Hall at the library with trails and with people and with lights. Nobody wants to send children up on that, on that site. The proposed Thicker Plan or design, whatever you, and also, everyone says that it's going to, we aren't having Martians build this site if it gets passed, okay? It's going to be you, the city council. You have a respect for all of us and for the property and for our money. So I don't think that you would incorporate that quick-and-dirty phantom plan that is referred to in all the literature, the DIMJIM plan, that talks about parking structures underground at $58,000 per car. I mean, who in their right mind would go through with that project? Secondly, the traffic problem we have is a problem for years, and it's about time that you fix it, no matter what happens there. And you have a few years to do that. Also, we had a general plan and a consensus in our community that we want to keep our community as a, as a community, as a beach-like, you know, residential feel to it. So why in God's name would we want to drop the City Hall into an asphalt and concrete jungle over at Fashion Island? We won't have our own identity. We'll be in the shadow or armpit of the Irvine Company. I think, I think the next generation deserves more than that, and as planners of the future, you needed to take that into account. And if we are going to lose any of these fees because of the lawsuit that's going on, then shame on the fact that you were so reckless with this that the environmental documents might get you stuck, okay? You shouldn't have done that. So those are my reasons for voting yes on Measure B, and I hope a lot of other people do also, because we've never been able to determine a site for this, and we own the land.
Dolores, I'm going to personally recommend that the mayor's parking space in the new City Hall only be large enough to fit a motorcycle, so you don't need to worry about the Hummer.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, that's it. Public comments have been closed. Thank you all very much for sharing your thoughts. Next item is planning, or oral reports from city council on committee activities. Does anyone feel compelled to make a report? Seeing no one, planning, commission agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I promised that I would make this report, and I feel like I have to. At the EQUAC meeting that we held, the last meeting, EQUAC concluded that they would further more carefully study a styrofoam ban possibility and make a recommendation to city council at whatever point they can. And we also had a nice presentation on LEED's building requirements. That's my report.
I would just say that at our planning session, we talked about making very full reports. It's always at this time of night, and we just want to get out here. That's why we don't make full reports.
Well, maybe we'll have shorter meetings in the future. We can have longer council reports. Mr. Leepo, anything of significance to report?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, have you got any questions on any of these, I guess?
Any questions in the previous? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, that concludes my agenda. Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, I'd like to adjourn the meeting this evening in the memory of Gary Clontz, a relative of Mayor Protem Dagels. Have your attention, please, there. I'd like to adjourn the meeting this evening in the memory of Gary Clontz, a relative of Mayor Protem Dagels, who died this last weekend of cancer. Dr. Clontz is married to Anna May, who is Leslie's cousin. This past July, Dr. Clontz and his wife and three children returned from a family vacation at Yellowstone National Park to learn that their father had cancer. He was only 49 years old. Dr. Clontz was the medical director of Walt Disney World. His family kidded him that he was the guy who treated Mickey Mouse when he had an earache. He oversaw health services for tens of millions of visitors to Walt Disney World and the 60,000 cast members who worked for Walt Disney World. He was a man of great intellect and compassion. He was devoted to his family. He leaves his wife, Anna May, and three school-aged children, Emily, Matthew, and Justin. With that, we're adjourned.